Get things in order here and we'll get started. All right, am I correct that the only person we are missing is Commissioner Leslie? Everyone else is here, correct, Mr. McNeely?
Chair Burton, you are correct. We have all commissioners but Commissioner Leslie and he had let us know he would not be available for this year.
All right. All right, it is five thirty. We will call this meeting to order. All right, let's start with the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be respectful. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. We ask that you please mute your microphones and turn off your cameras. Additionally, the message function of this platform is for communicating technical difficulties only. It is not for case discussion. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. All right, Mr. McNeely, will you please lead us with the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chair Burton.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for July thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion for approving the minutes for?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes from July thirtieth, twenty twenty five as presented.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Tina Berger, all second approval of the minutes.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Berger. For approval of the minutes, all in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
Commissioner Berger?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Abstain.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Williams?
Oh, sorry, new screen abstain.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
This is Chair Burton, I also vote aye, motion passes. Third item on the agenda is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address this commission for items not on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand. All right, I'm not seeing any. Let's move on to public hearings for this evening. So the first one on the list is case number CUP dash twenty-five dash thirty. It's a conditional use permit for an RV. As far as I know, we've had no opposition to this, so. Does anyone? Wish to, any of the commissioners wish to discuss this? Okay, not seeing any, does the applicant or their representative wish to address the commission on this case?
Is this, I'm sorry, this is Jason McNeil. We got on here about four minutes late, we're having some problems getting on. The virtual site, so we just called in. Is this the case for Jason and Alexis McNeil up in Elk Park Meadows?
No, it is not, not yet.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on this case? Not seeing any, all right, I'll entertain a motion to approve CUP twenty-five thirty.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Who wants to take it?
This is Commissioner Walsh, I recommend approval of CUP dash twenty-five dash zero three zero with the conditions outlined.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion for approval by Commissioner Walsh and a second by Vice Chair Wilson. All those in favor, Commissioner Hayward?
Long time to eat a chip, aye.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
All right, this is Chair Burton, I also vote aye, motion passes. All right, let's go to the next item on the agenda, CUP dash twenty-five dash zero three two. We are going to let staff present on this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sophie Kozza from our staff is managing this case. I see she's already shared her screen, so Sophie, go ahead and give your presentation, thank you.
Thank you, this is case CUP twenty-five thirty-two, McNeil RV as a permanent residence. The owner is the McNeil Family Trust out of Cave Creek, Arizona. And the applicant is Ryan Maher of Civil Design and Engineering out of Flagstaff. The property is located at sixty-one twenty-eight Big Game Trail in Elk Park Meadows. And the zoning is agricultural residential with a one acre minimum parcel size. And the request is to use an RV as a permanent residence on a one point one nine acre parcel in the AR zone. If approved, the RV would be permanently affixed with a foundation. Electric would be provided via solar array. Water would be hauled and waste would be managed with an onsite wastewater system. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property towards the south, it's about two miles south of Lower Lake Mary. And this is an aerial photo of the property. And then this is their site plan. So there is a drainage way towards the rear of the property, the western side, and then this line going through the middle. Demarks a one hundred foot drainage way setback, and then the structure here is where the RV would be located. And then this is the proposed park model RV. And this is a photo of the park model onsite. So for the citizen participation plan, neighbors within three hundred feet of the property were notified of a neighborhood meeting. Which was held by the applicant on May eighth. There were zero people who attended the meeting and. At that time, the applicant received correspondence from two neighbors stating they had no concerns. Since then, staff have received ten letters of opposition. So this slide goes over the main points from those letters. The first one was concern that this case would set precedence for future RVs, which is not the case. Each future conditional use permit for an RV will be considered on a case by case basis. There is also concern about this RV being used as a short term rental. And RVs are not permitted to be used as short term rentals. Another point of concern was CCNR compliance and the county does not enforce CCNRs as they are private agreements. There were also concerns about building codes and permitting process differences between an RV and a stick built dwelling. And following CUP approval, if this case is approved, all required permits. Must be obtained from the Building Division and Environmental Quality Division, including permits for a foundation, water. Wastewater and electrical connections. There were also noticing concerns and the applicant was required to notify all neighbors within a three hundred foot radius for the neighborhood meeting that they held. As required by this zoning ordinance. And staff had also mailed hearing notices and posted a zoning notice on the property itself. Another concern was with flooding and if approved, the applicant will comply with all floodplain requirements. And then the final point of concern was about community character. And staff analysis on that subject is that this park model RV is not out of character with the surrounding residential developments. As for long range plan compliance, the county comprehensive plan does support affordable housing as well as a variety of housing types. And these are the findings of fact required for a conditional use permit. And these are staff's recommended conditions of approval for this conditional use permit. So with that, staff recommend approval of CUP twenty-five thirty-two. Are there any questions?
Before we jump into questions, I'd like to remind the public that their cameras and microphones should be off, thank you very much. All right, do any of the commissioners, okay, Vice Chair Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was curious to know. In the staff report, it said neighbors have not objected to the proposal and that was one of the staff analysis overview. Points, since that has changed rather dramatically, has that factored into the staff's recommendation?
It has been considered, but staff still recommends approval of the case.
So I guess the answer would be it has not changed your opinion.
Correct.
Okay. And then the citizen participation meeting, I believe I read in one of the. Emails. There was a question as to whether that actually had occurred or not? Is that correct?
So there were in the letters of opposition, there were a couple of people who stated that the applicant did not notify the neighbors of the meeting. And the records we received from the applicant did say that they mailed everybody. An invitation to that meeting.
I'm actually asking about the actual conduct of the meeting, not the notification. Do we have any evidence to show the meeting actually occurred?
I do not have evidence, but the applicant did provide a citizen participation report saying that they did hold the meeting, although nobody showed up.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hayward?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was. I'm not sure I understand the difference between. What we consider an RV and what we would consider. A tiny home, for instance. Because I read RV and now I look at the picture of that thing and I'm like, oh, that's a, that's a tiny home. So what is the difference in our code?
Yeah, so RVs and park models are built to different standards than tiny homes, so that's the differentiating factor there.
Okay, so that's like a national standard that exists for. For all these that's different from the, from the building code and tiny homes have. The, the actual residential building code.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Hayward, this is Jess with staff and the. Park model RVs will have a data plate on them. And that data plate will demonstrate that it's built typically to the ANSI, ANSI or RIVA, RIVA standard. And those are recreational vehicle codes. So that they are built to a recreational vehicle code, this, this does come up as a confusing item often. But the fact of the matter is park model RVs do not be, do not meet building code. They do not meet the HUD manufactured home code, they are, they are classified as an RV recreational vehicle. So that's, that's where we get into this. Recreational vehicle as a permanent residence conditional use permit when, when you are using a park model RV, if, if that helps.
Yeah, it helps, yes, just it helps define it, I don't know if it helps the decision making, thank you.
Commissioner Burger?
So as I understand it, when you're a rec vehicle or RV, that's done by a MVD title, not a deed of trust, correct?
Yeah, you cut out there a second, Jess, you, you said yes, correct?
Oh, yeah, yes, Commissioner Burger, correct, it's. We realize it is, it is a little different than a self propelled or a towed RV, although you, you do tow these to get them to your site. But yeah, it's, it's a piece of private property, doesn't become a piece of real property. It doesn't become affixed to, to your property as real property in that it is not issued a building permit. In this case, it's just simply issued whichever, in this case, a conditional use permit in order to use the, this. Park model recreational vehicle as a residence on the property. So there's no building permit that's, that's issued confirming that this is a, a home built, built to building code.
I'm just bringing up some clarification for everybody because there is a big difference, thank you.
And, and I'd like to interject, please do not use the chat function for comments on this case, that is for technical difficulties only. We will get to the public comment portion in a bit. Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Um, so just for clarification. The park models are brought there on wheels as are a single wide or a double wide. So what is the difference between those two things? Because in essence, it seems like more or less the same.
Yes, yes, thank you.
It's not going to be towed around like a trailer.
Right.
Clearly.
Thanks, Commissioner Walsh. They typically, a park model RV could be moved on and off a little more easily than a manufactured home that you just described. The manufactured home would have, is built to a different code and, and this, this is what's confirmed with a data plate on the unit. That's a little metal data plate that's affixed to the unit from the factory it came out of. When it's a park model RV, it's, it was built to a recreational vehicle code. The single wides and double wides you just described, yes, they are brought in on the back of a, of a truck bed typically. And then set on the site, but they are built to a, to a building code, actually to the HUD. Housing and Urban Development Building Code for manufactured homes. And they are, they are considered a permanent home unlike a, unlike the code that a park model RV is built to. And we all recognize that when you look at one of these, when you look at an image of a park model RV. That you, you know, you scratch your head and say, no, this, this doesn't, you know, this looks very similar to a manufactured home. We realize that it's, it's the code difference.
It looks better, actually.
Yeah, often, smaller, they're smaller, that's, that's one of the hallmarks of, of the limited width of a park, park model RV. Chair Burton, I believe Commissioner Hayward has his hand up.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute my mic, Commissioner Hayward, go ahead.
Please freeze. Thank you, I have one more question, so one thing. I was a little confused about was how the. Structure is there currently on the site if we have not yet approved it? What, what is the, I know, I know kind of what, you know, what, what allows them to do that?
Great question, Commissioner Hayward. They, they, they're, they're essentially storing it on the site. Currently, this is very common for our recreational vehicle as a residence that's more of a traditional camping trailer. That we would see in other parts of the county where it would already be on the site, it's being stored on the site. The applicant is seeking the conditional use permit to, to place it as a permanent residence.
So if you move this off every once in a while. And it wasn't a permanent residence, there'd be absolutely no restrictions about having it there? It would be like driving your car onto your own property and then driving it back off again when you go down, back down to the valley?
In, actually, in the case of a, of a park model RV such as this, you're supposed to get a temporary use permit to be storing it there. If you're going to need to store it there for, for any length of time.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and I just want to add one more little clarification that. That I'd like staff to confirm for the public is that. Sophie had mentioned the CCNRs and the commission does not have purview. Where CCNRs are concerned, so that is not something we take into consideration at all, that is a private matter. Between the homeowners and just the homeowners in the area and does not impact our decision here.
Absolutely correct, yes.
Okay. All right, do any other commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any comments, wish to address the, the commission? If so, please go ahead and unmute, state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Hi, my name is Ryan Maher, I'm with CDNE, I live at four two eight zero East Spring Meadows Circle in Flagstaff. I'm representing my client, Jason McNeil. He purchased the property with the unit already stored on it. So that's, that's why it's there, he's trying to kind of clean up the permitting process so that he can actually reside in the. Park model. And I would also like to bring up, I looked up in my records today with the meeting notice. There were approximately fifteen addresses that were within three hundred feet. So we sent those out on, I believe, April twenty ninth. Or no, I'm sorry, April twenty third. I did notice today that all of those addresses were not in the area. They were all either Phoenix or Prescott or much further away. So I, I think maybe that might be some of the confusion. There was one Flagstaff address, it was, but it was to a. Flagstaff address in town, not near the site. We held the meeting on May eighth and nobody showed up, we did receive two letters. That I think they were both from people that lived in the valley. Stating that they wouldn't be able to attend the meeting, but they didn't have any comments. I think that's it. We are, we did currently just submit septic plans to DEQ for their review. And that's, that's where we are today, thank you.
All right, does any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any, at this time.
I, I'm sorry, I was trying to wait my turn, I'm actually the owner of six one twenty-eight Big Game Trail.
We're not, I, I haven't gotten to the public comment portion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
So I am, I'm just about to get into that and then I will ask that, so we'll open it to public comment. And I would ask that people raise their hand or unmute and wait to be called on. I will call on you, please state your name and address when I do, and then you will have three minutes to make your comments. So at this time, I will go ahead and open it to public comment and I will go ahead and call on Jason and Alexis McNeil, it looks like.
Yes.
So go ahead and make your comments.
Yeah, hi, Jason Alexis McNeil here, we're the owners of six two one twenty-eight Big Game Trail, the place we're talking about. One comment is that we, we were going to haul water, we actually just paid to get a well dug, the well is already installed. And we've been waiting on the conditioning use permit to be able to hook the house up to the well water. And as Ryan already mentioned, we have. Paid for the plans to get our septic installed and the plans were built around this log cabin that we have. I know it's being called an RV, but it's a log cabin. And we are, everything we've done and everything we've paid for already since we bought the property. On April thirteenth, I think it was, was built around this cabin. It's a four hundred square foot cabin, it's going to be permanently affixed to a concrete foundation, that's our plan. Which we paid for a site plan built around this cabin. In order to have it be a residence for us that we will be using seasonally, we won't be in Flagstaff. In the winter months, we'll be up there just in the summer and typically on weekends. We do have a permanent residence down here in Cave Creek, Arizona, we've been long term residents here. And I've already, we, when we had the meeting, I did show up. Virtually to attend that meeting back on May twenty-third, I think it was, or April twenty-third. And one of the representatives, I think from our engineering company or possibly even Coconino County was there for the public meeting. And no one called in or had any issues. I've spoken with, and I have documented eight neighbors, none of them have verbalized any issue with us having. Our cabin on the, using it as a permanent residence. And. I, I think that's all I got to add, you have anything to add?
No.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Does any of the commissioners have any question for the applicant? Okay, thank you for filling us in on that and I am going to open it up, continue with public comment. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to comment on this? You can unmute or raise your hand. If you raise your hand, I know what order it's in. Let's see, so I have two unmuted here, let's start with, there's a. Okay, well, I have a hand raised, so Kathy, go ahead and state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Yes, this is Kathy Wild Johnson, I'm at fifty-one sixty-three Stonehouse Drive here in, it's considered Flagstaff, Arizona. I am currently in the meadow and I am a permanent resident, I am not someone that just comes occasionally. I think part of the discrepancy that we had with this is the fact that this is a vacation pretty much area, you know? Most people do not live here, there's a handful of us that live here, here full time. And so, you know, I happened upon this notice and so of course, we started questioning, what does it mean? And, you know, I think I got involved in this simply because one of our other neighbors had mentioned that. Because of things, and I do know that you don't recognize our CCNRs, but this is why it became an issue with. The public here in Elk Park Meadows is the fact that in the past, there was, let's say, a double wide that was brought in. And it doesn't fit our CCNRs and then someone else took advantage of the fact that nobody questioned it, then another one was brought in. So this is why I think things have become, you know, our concerns have been raised, what does it mean? Is this going to become Elk Park Meadow RV Park, which is not what we want? You know, I think what Jason, his, his cabin is, is very nice, I mean, it's a step up, if you look around, it is a step up. But I don't think he's asking for a permanent occupancy, I think he's asking for a conditional use permit. Which I don't know what that means for him in this meeting, you know, how it would be. How it comes into play, you understand, and maybe it means because he wants to take it off of his trailer. You know, all of that has to be determined by you guys, but what we're trying to keep from happening is having our meadow become. Just a place to park an RV and get away with it, put a little foundation under it and call it a home. And, you know, I have put in a lot of money into my home, I don't want my property values being affected by this at all. I don't see him affecting my property value in as much as if you looked at his cabin, I think it's very nice. But we also have, we're looking out for our best interest with regard. But we also have, we're looking out for our best interest with regard to not having this become a trailer park. No, so the conditional use permit, I'm not sure what he's requesting exactly that I understand it. And I think my biggest concern in the beginning was, as a neighbor, and I live here permanently. Why was I like unable to be aware of the fact that there was a meeting being held? I would have loved to been part of it so I could spread the word what it means, you know, and I mean, I do live here, so maybe it helps. But um, you know, that wasn't the case. In my case, I was like, okay, what's going on? Because I don't want anything to be slid in under the carpet. I want things to be above board. I want our neighbors to respect each other and respect our values and what we have out here. So that's why I felt it was necessary to make a post on our Facebook page. While I did it for somebody else. I have since learned so much over the last three days. Um, unfortunately, I felt like too bad I didn't have more time in order to understand it, but I do believe I have the gist of it now. So that's basically what I had to say about this uh this meeting. And I have uh other people here, if they need to comment, they're using my phone because I have wifi. So anyways, um, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
And that's, yeah, that's it, your three-minute limit. So just a reminder that the chair's uh limit is three minutes for public comments. Thanks.
All right, uh, anybody else in the public wish to comment on the case this evening? I see, okay, yes, uh, is your phone number end in nine six?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and address and you have three minutes to make your comments.
Okay, this is uh Wayne Erickson. I'm at six one six four Big Game Trail. I'm a direct neighbor to Jason and Alexis. And I just wanted to uh. Voice my support for them. Um, their place is a step above. Anything else, you know, a a lot of the trailers in the in the meadow. As far as it being an RV, I know it's classified as an RV, but you're not gonna, you, a one-ton truck's not gonna hook up to that and go camping. And to me, I guess that's my viewpoint of an RV, whether you're driving a motorhome or hooking up to a travel trailer and going. So I just wanted to say I'm I'm in full support and backup uh Jason Alexis um to move forward with this. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Um, let's see, I see a. Uh, let's see, a number ending in three four. Is that anyone who wishes to address the commission on this case? Okay, I'm not hearing anything from you. Um, Kathy, your hand is still raised. If you could put your hand down. Uh, is there anybody else in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case?
Hey, I think Kathy, um, and also M G, I believe Kathy may have other people with her. Yeah, that are using her computer.
Okay, Kathy, do you have another individual there that wishes to, that's that's in a separate household that wishes to speak on this case?
Actually, they've they've said that I pretty much covered what they wanted to say.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so it looks to me like we've gotten everybody in the.
There is a James Wilkins who wants to speak.
Okay, uh, go ahead and uh state your name and address and you have three minutes to make your comments.
Sure, my name is Jim Wilkins. I have a cabinet at the fifty three ninety three Cotton Tail Lane uh in Elk Park Meadow. Um, my understanding was that this was a tiny home. From hearing what I've heard earlier, now you're saying. It's not a tiny home because a tiny home would have been built to code. It it is technically an RV, but it's an RV, I think you called it park model. Is there any way that the, because I I know the unit, the unit's been there a long time. I think people are living in it and have been living in it. Um, but I think that I like it. It looks nice. I have no objection to that unit. But is there some way that you could approve this permit? Where you specifically approve it as a park model RV, just not an RV in a very broad, the way it is right now? Because I I know there are individuals out there that would look at your actions today. And even though the staff is saying that it's not gonna have any presidential debt value. I just think that if people see that they've come to Fresno or the Coconino County and gotten approval for an RV. Um, and there is no distinction that it's a park model RV, which is more likely to be a permanent structure. Um, that it's gonna raise issues and 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 perhaps then that would even. I have no objection to a park model being used. But if you're gonna tell me that a park model is an RV just like any other RV, then I guess really the legal recourse for us. Is to file an action and enforce the CCNRs because the CCNRs prohibit any RVs. And and I don't want to do that and I don't think people want to do that, but I also don't want this turning into an RV park. And I think if the commission doesn't do something to delineate this and make it clear. It's not approving any RV in general, that you're opening the door to further problems down the road for every.
All right, uh, thank you for your comments. I do believe your concerns will be alleviated when we get to commission discussion. Um, okay. That I think reaches your three-minute time. It looks like we have a Donna Skinner in the public who would like to speak. Uh, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Don Skinner. My address is fifty eight thirty seven Big Game Trail. And I live just down the road from the property being discussed. I'd never received a notice of a meeting. It would seem like to me that as important this is, it would be posted, it would have been posted that there was going to be a meeting. I don't believe that was done. And I I echo what Jim just said completely. I I'm sure there's already one individual that is lining up. If you approve this, there's one individual lining up. Since it states RV. He will be applying for a a cup also with identification as a as an RV. That will be not as nice as what the property we're talking about. Now, it seems to me that that this is a big presentation by your staff for this one property. I would like to know, is this a normal way to go about approving properties?
Do you have any additional comments to make?
So you won't answer my question?
Uh, it's public comment, it's not discussion time. I I I do. I do think your questions will be answered when we get to our commission discussion. When you guys, you guys can hang out and listen to our thoughts and um our opinions on this.
Okay, one of one of the big big things that's gotten me concerned now is that. You you had more, way more oppositions than you did support for this uh approval. But yet that your staff says that was taken into account, but didn't sway their opinion. That's concerning. We just live in the meadow because it's a beautiful place. We've had mobile homes in there before and it looks disgusting. We don't want an RV park, as the lady stated. It's a place where we've put lots of time and lots of money. And if you put yourself in our situation. The nomenclature RV is devastating to our area or would be. And I thank you for allowing me to comment.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on this case?
Um, yes.
Yeah, Andy Mitchell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead and state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Yep, Andy Mitchell, um, three six zero one two North Seventh Street, Phoenix, eight five oh eight six. Um, anyway, I, yeah, Don Skinner is probably referring to me. An RV doesn't suit my needs. I I I, this is very informative. I'm glad you went through the building codes on the park model versus manufactured home versus Coconino County requirements. I I I want some MATEZA as a uh ability to get a mortgage on it, so this would not suit me at all. Anyway, um. However, I think Don brought up a good point is, are there cases where you guys have allowed, say, park models to go in? Either as ADUs or as loan buildings over a vast majority of objections by neighbors? And 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 that's not specific to this unit. I'm more thinking about bigger picture.
Do you have any additional, this is not a discussion time. It's just public comment time. Do you have any additional comments to make?
Oh, um, I I think the cabin looks pretty. I I um don't really have a specific objection to that. Um, a RV that's typical, like a metal skinned RV. I see in in the agenda, there's another one you guys are considering, correct? So you do consider all styles? Correct. And from you guys' chair, you're not necessarily trying to be an HOA. And determine what looks good and what doesn't look good. So just like Don Skinner, it kind of bothers me that the that the committee here. Doesn't seem to necessarily change their view, no matter what objections uh are brought up. But having said that, I think you've done a good job of alleviating the objections or explaining things.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody else in the public who would wish to comment on this case?
Uh, myself. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, can you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
My name is Mark Walter. I'm at fifty six fifty six Whitetail Lane. Uh, first off, Mr. McNeil, uh, kudos to him for at least going through the proper channels. And trying to do the right thing and make this right in the first place, rather than just taking it upon himself to do whatever he wants. Which has a tendency in this place. Uh, I agree one hundred percent with what Mr. Wilkins said. Uh, his concerns, which are the same concerns as Mr. Skinner. Um, we do not want an RV park. The problem with this CUP is, I think, is just the verbiage because it says this thing is an RV. Uh, someone said, y- yeah, you can't pull this down the road with a one-ton truck. You can't. It's, once it's said, it's not an RV. An RV is a travel trailer, a fifth-wheel motorhome, those kinds of things. And I think that's the concern that everybody has, is we do not want to start an RV park. His tiny home, his his uh whatever the terminology was on this is is beautiful. No, I don't think anybody has a problem with that part of it. The problem is, where is it gonna go from here with particular individuals wanting to try to do things with RVs? And that's that's my my stance too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, I'm gonna make one more call to the public to comment on this case. Is there anyone who wishes to just address the commission for this case? Okay, I think we've gotten through everybody, so I'm going to close the public comment portion and open it to the commission discussion. Um, I think that, I know, I think I'll go ahead and start. Um. I have been in the last couple of months in the position as all the residents here. Because we had an application for an RV as a permanent residence where I live and. I made it very clear that it wasn't appropriate for a regular travel trailer in my neighborhood because of the density. I'm gonna say the same thing here. Um, I think that the the wishes of the community have been aptly heard. I want to make sure that everybody understands that every single permit request, conditional use permit for an RV as a permanent residence. Has to go through this process and we look at absolutely everything, including the the neighborhood, will it fit in? We look at all of that. So the neighbors have made it very clear. They don't want the regular bumper-pull trailers, fifth wheels. Um, and every single permit has to be approved by us and it has to conform with what is presented. So approving the, if we approve this tonight, that is not carte blanche for everybody to just throw an RV of any type on there. That doesn't mean we are going to approve every RV that is brought to us to put in here. So we, like, for me personally, I can make the findings for the case just because this, it's it's a cute. House, it's a cute little tiny home. It is a park mall RV. We're really into legalities at this point as far as what constitutes RV versus a regular house. Um, you know, he's doing everything with the sepp, like putting in all of the infrastructure and a permanent foundation, it sounds like. It's gonna look like a tiny home. Um, and so from my perspective of, and I've been doing this for a lot of years now on this commission. Um, every single person who wants to to have an RV as a permanent residence, which includes park model homes, has to come through this commission. And we are seeing them every single month. A lot of the ones we get are out in like the valley area most of the time, where they're in the middle of nowhere, there's no neighbors to object. Um. So, and it does very clearly, as she's, as um, we have on the screen here, the recommended conditions for approval. The first one on here is that the project should be developed as shown on the approved site plan and described in the narrative. And that's the key, as described in the narrative. They are putting a park model on here. We have a picture of it. It has to basically match exactly what we're being told in order for this conditional. Um, use permit to be valid. So, and this is something that we put basically in all of them. This is kind of the standard that we have. Every single one that we come through, it has to um be done basically as presented for the most part. So I'm I'm hoping that. I'm hoping that I'm alleviating some stress from the neighbors on this, is that everybody does need to come through. If you have people just showing up and parking in their RV and living in it, well, then you call the county and you call for zone enforcement. Um, because they do need to come through this process. They need to do it the right way. And I applaud this applicant for doing this the right way and it and it appears to be very well thought out. So, um. The, those are my comments on this. Um, I do want to open it up to the rest of the commissioners to put their two cents in. I'd like to know if they can make the findings. I can make the findings. Um, so let's go around the room. Uh, Commissioner Hayward.
Thank you, Man Chair. Um, this this one, thi- this one's not an easy one for me. Um, you know, I I do think the process by which we would review these conditional use permits. Um, for our visas of permanent residence, it is quite heavily skewed towards. You know, is this gonna have a negative impact on the neighbors? Um, you know, and as Chair Burton said, you know, often when we're looking at 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 real travel trailers, right? Being put out, as we saw in some of those photographs, right, of the other things we approved, being put out in quite remote, quite rural areas. Um, you know, it is evident that it is not gonna have, you know, any impact on the neighbors and that's that's an easy decision. Um, you know, likewise, I think if we'd heard, if I'd heard the comments that, you know, I heard from the neighborhood. Tonight and we were looking at a standard metal-sided travel trailer, I I'd probably be voting no. Um, you know, and um, I I think the rest of my fellow commissioners can can attest that, you know, I'm inclined to vote yes. Um, so, you know, my my feeling is that in this specific case. I think we've heard from a few of the neighbors that, you know, this is a nice, this is a nice-looking um structure. Um, and it's, it's not gonna be a detriment to the neighborhood. Um, I agree with that. Um, uh, the the fact that the immediate neighbor, um, you know, was willing to come in here and make that comment um in support of it. Um, that means a lot to me. We do not hear that a lot. Um, and, you know, so so in that case, you know, for this specific model of RV that is. Delineated in this narrative, I I can make the findings. Um, I I can also assure you, you know, if I'm here and we're talking about. And a a standard travel trailer on this, on a, in this neighborhood, um, and we s- we hear the same level. and a, a, a standard travel trailer on this, on a, in this neighborhood, um, and we, we hear the same level of concern from the neighbors that, you know, this is, this is a detriment to our community and it is becoming, you know, we do not want it to become an RV park. Um, I'm, I'm gonna listen to that. Um, so, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Berger.
Sorry about that. Um, as David pointed out, he usually says yes to everything and, and I'm, I'm kind of in that same boat because I've had this on one of my properties as well. Um, but I'm inclined to kind of lean into approving it, and only because uh, it's not your typical metal-sided RV. Um, I would not want to have that next to me in a prominent residential area. But in this particular case, um, I'm just inclined to make the findings because it's, it's not only visually pleasing, it's gonna be attached to a, um, a foundation. That changes all of it for me, um, in the way that I look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to express my appreciation for all of the public comments. And I want to congratulate the McNeils for going through all of this arduous process of permitting. I can make the findings. I think it's a darling home. Um, and I definitely hear the concern about the words RV in the permit, but I believe Madam Chair has explained to, uh, the public that all of these must go through this process. And, um, yeah, I, I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams.
Um, I can make the findings too. And, um, again, these, every one of these does come through this permitting process. And I can tell you without any doubt, if it was a regular tow behind RV, the kind that we do often approve, like out in valley um, and other parts of the county, um, it would not get approved here tonight. So, um, you know, it's not because it's just black and white. Like, if one gets approved in the county, it's gonna, that they're gonna get approved everywhere. You know, we do look at these in, in locations individually. And in some places, they're appropriate. And in other places, the regular tow behind RV is not appropriate. So, um, that being said, I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, it's been pointed out that, uh, there are CCNRs, uh, involved here in this development. And it's not for me really to comment on them. But our situation is this, uh, if there were CCNRs, then the community would be making this decision. And since the CCNRs are not in force, um, this body of ten or twelve, actually forty-seven people is listening to this story. And, uh, we'd be a lot better off if the community came together and made their CCNRs real. Most of these cases, and we're getting a couple a month, but most of them, we rubber stamp. Uh, most of them, as has been pointed out, are in valley where there are pretty much no neighbors. And we would be happy to rubber stamp one here that was consistent with CCNRs, uh, that the community puts together. So I think that's, uh, homework for the community. And, uh, as the other, um, commissioners have stated, I can make the findings here because even the people who object generally say, they like this one. They just don't like the precedent. But it's up to the community to figure out the precedent issue and figure out what standards they want. So next time, we can just rubber stamp one of these things. So I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think the important point here is, is every one of these hearings is unique. And the reason that we do this is specifically because there are unique sets of circumstances in every case. Um, and, and we will continue to do that moving forward. In this case, I was concerned about the number of negative comments that we had received via email. Um, but what we have seen, um, this evening, heard from the, the local neighbors and from the owners, um, I'm satisfied that this is going to fit well in that community and I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Tohe.
Oh, thank you, everybody. And thank you, Chair. Um, first, I want to just say appreciation for the public for turning out and having the, the thought to protect, um, the home place that they really enjoy. And then I also want to appreciate the applicant for going through the proper channels and the proper process for getting this done. Um, and also just wanna, uh, share that, um, just the park model RV is, is supposed to be for stationary use, uh, with a lot of the features being house-like. And I think that that's what the applicants really wanted and to have them fit in in that way. Where, whereas the regular RV is designed for travel and mobility, and that is not the case that they want. And so, and I appreciate the, the clarity, um, even though there was opposition, that the clarity was there, that they did appreciate that they wanted, that the applicants wanted this home to be stationary and not be moved around and have a, a foundation, um, there. So, uh, I just want to say thank you for that. And I can make the findings. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like we're probably ready for a motion. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion? And then I need a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the case.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll second the motion to approve CUP twenty-five dash zero three two.
Okay, so, um, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Hayward. I have a second by Vice Chair Wilson to approve CUP twenty-five dash zero three two. All those in favor? Commissioner Hayward?
Sorry, I was just looking at the documents and I had it. It does different CUP numbers on the, on the staff report, but, um, in two different places. Um, aye.
Commissioner Berger.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe.
Aye.
This is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to case number three. It's a DRO dash twenty-five dash zero zero four.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Zach Schwartz from our staff is managing this case. Looks like he has his screen shared, so go ahead, Zach.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is case DRO twenty-five zero zero four. The Village Camp Flagstaff Phase Three Design Review Overlay. The owner of the subject property is Pine Valley Resort LLC out of Scottsdale. Applicant is Jacob Robinson of Ardura from Prescott. And the property is located at one-three-one-three-zero West Brannigan Park Road. That's in Belmont. The parcel size for the subject property is nine-point-six-three acres. And the subject property is zoned, uh, PC, that's Planned Community, which the entirety of Belmont is zoned Planned Community. This specific property is set to heavy commercial standards. And this request is for design review approval for an RV park. Here's a vicinity map. So this is I forty west of Flagstaff in the Belmont area. Uh, off the exit, there's Pilot here. And then going west on Brannigan Park is how you would access the subject property here. To the north is Coconino National Forest. To the east is an APS substation in the same zone. Uh, to the west is another property in the same zone, owned by the subject property owner. And, uh, to the north here are Village Camp, uh, Phases One and Two. Here's an aerial photo of the subject property, so it's vacant and no vegetation, relatively flat. So for this third phase of Village Camp Flagstaff, the applicant is proposing a seventy-unit RV park with full hookups. Uh, they're requesting a registration and general store building just under two thousand square feet in size and a cart barn just under three thousand square feet in size. These uses by themselves are permitted by right in the zone. So tonight, uh, the commission's decision is based solely on the design of the project. For a little bit of history, Village Camp Phases Three and Four were approved before in two thousand twenty-one by the Planning and Zoning Commission. But the applicant was unable to obtain building permits for the project within two years, so that approval elapsed. And the currents mills for this Phase Three of the project are nearly identical to those approved in two thousand twenty-one. But the applicant has left off Phase Four, which is the other parcel. It's across the Forest Service Road to the west. And this is the site plan, and, uh, I'll, I'll go through it in more detail on upcoming slides. But just to orient us generally to where things are, the applicant is proposing driveway, two of them off of Brannigan Park, one here, one here, one off of Forest Service Road one-seventy-one. They have a registration building and general store, uh, shown here near the northwest corner of the property. And then the cart barn just southeast of that, with RV spaces filling out the rest of the parcel to the southeast. So getting into the details of the registration building and general store, the applicant is proposing Douglas fir wood siding and charcoal gray corrugated metal siding, also storm gray standing seam metal roof. The dimensions of the registration building would be forty-two by forty-six, and it would be approximately twenty-one feet tall. It also would include a covered patio that wraps around the northwest corner. You can see it here on the elevations a bit. And also, this floor plan is sort of skewed on its side here with north over to the left. But here's the covered patio. This would be the, and I know it's hard to see. You also have this in your packet if you want a clearer view, or I can zoom in on it. But, uh, this is the general store area, two offices inside, a restroom and a utility room. And then accessible only from the outside are two bathroom and shower uh, rooms here and a laundry and, uh, a laundry area here. For the cart barn, the applicant is proposing charcoal gray corrugated metal siding and storm gray standing seam metal roof. So that matches registration building. Uh, the proposed structure would be seventy by forty and approximately twenty-one foot tall. It has large garage bays on it, three of them. Um, and it's mostly sort of just open with a storage uh, room inside, a restroom and an office. I do want to point out that the applicant's, uh, site plan does show a trail running through the back of it. That's something that's also, uh, asked for in the Belmont area plan. So here is a map from the future land use map on the, in the Belmont area plan. It's clearly shown that the area plan asks for this trail to, to wrap around the, the rear of these properties here up to the north. And the APS substation to the southeast already has that part of trail behind it. As far as landscaping and fencing, the applicant proposes, uh, fencing along the northeastern property boundary. They're showing it outside of the proposed foots trail, and they are calling it wildlife-friendly fencing. I don't believe that this photo in the image here would actually be wildlife-friendly fencing. But staff has conditioned this design review overlay that it would be reviewed by the urban, um, wildlife planner prior to issuance of a building permit. So we would indeed have wildlife-friendly fencing along the northern property boundary here. I also want to point out that the applicant, along the frontage on Brannigan Park, shows a twenty-foot landscape buffer with, uh, a three-foot tall berm with landscaping planted on top of that here on the site plan. As far as signage, the applicant is looking to place a entry monument sign right here on the property, twelve feet tall, rusted steel frames with backlit lettering. And then two weight-finding signages, so one near the driveway entrance for, for Service Road one-seventy-one and another one that's more oriented toward the trail on the rear. Uh, we call this halo lighting, and it looks sort of like this here on the bottom right side of your screen. As far as lighting, um, the applicant submitted a lighting plan also on this site plan. So these red marks, I know they're difficult to see, but there's a number of them throughout the RV park. These are pole lights, seventeen and a half foot tall. Um, and then the applicant didn't include all the details on the building. Those might be more figured out in the building permit stage, but they showed them wall pack lightings on, uh, these would be on the building and they would, uh, they would be conditioned to meet Dark Skies requirements. The applicant did submit, um, a lighting plan that shows that both of these fixtures are amber LED and fully shielded, which is what, above and beyond what the Dark Skies requirements ask for. But the applicant does also show in their plans, um, an upward sign illumination floodlight. That does not meet Dark Skies requirements, so staff will not be able to approve that moving forward in the building permit stage. And that will need to be removed from the plans if this were approved. As far as conformance with the design review overlay guidelines, the Belmont area plan uh, asks for multi-modal transportation accessibility infrastructure. It asks for building design that's forest-influenced and rustic industrial. And for materials and colors such as rusted steel, wood, and earth tone colors. Uh, the landscaping shown appears to meet the minimum landscape requirements, and that's another uh, condition of this permit, should it be approved tonight, that at the building permit process, we would, uh, we would get the full landscaping plan and make sure it meets all of the details of the zoning ordinance requirements for landscaping. And lighting is consistent with the Zone Two standards. So staff does find that the request is consistent with the DRO guidelines. So if the commission is able to find that the DRO twenty-five zero zero four meets the requirements of the DRO guidelines, then staff recommends approval subject to the conditions on the screen. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Do any commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Best.
Uh, yeah, in, in my looking at the maps, it looks like everything adjacent to this, where people might go hiking, is a national forest. Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Best, so do you mean adjacent to the north?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
People are gonna be using the trail and then going down to this, uh, opening into the forest. Uh, I assume that's a dirt road that goes back into the forest? On the north, northwest side?
So this is actually paved for Service Road one-seventy-one.
Okay, okay. But that's really, uh, we don't have state land there, and it looks like the private land is reasonably. I, I'm working on a, a condition that would ask the, um, applicant, as we've done before, to help out with leave no trace and, uh, inform people about the level of fire danger. But it doesn't look like, uh, we're gonna need maps showing people where they can go and can't go, because that looks pretty simple.
Absolutely, yeah. So, so just going up north here, you'd be right into the forest, and I think that kind of signage would be appropriate.
Okay. Uh, all right. Thank you very much.
And just to clarify, that's something that we can include in a design review overlay?
Madam Chair, that does kind of live in a weird area. I mean, signage is part of design review. So if the commission would like to place conditions in that regard, I- So if the commission would like to place conditions in that regard, I think it's fair game.
Okay. This is Jess with staff and chair. I'd point out that the, the, there were conditions placed on this on the RV park back when it, you know, the first phase was village camp phase one back when, when it was approved. So the conditions have to be associated with, of this, of the design review. Unfortunately, you're just really limited to meeting the design requirements. And the use, the use is entitled. So if there's concern with use impacts, that's, that is, that is a different, that is a that's a different kind of condition if it's, if it's dealing with the impacts of the use. Because there's no questions about the use. It's just about, does the design meet our design standards or not?
Yeah, that, that's, that's why I was asking. Vice Chair Wilson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to verify that with our legal counsel. What, what we can and cannot do with respect to design a DRO versus a CUP. Could they pipe in?
Hello, I'm here, Angela. I, I think that I, I will confirm, I think, I think Zach is who it said. He set out what the guidelines are and I will confirm that is correct. And also what Jess had just limited to the design. If it falls under the design and the guidelines that have been set out in the presentation, then I think you're going to be good.
So Ms. Lane, it sounds to me like Zach and Jess said two different things.
Yeah, that's.
I was. Well, what I got, I think Jess was more talking about the difference between like what you, just the difference between design and use. And what I remember Zach saying, maybe I, maybe I misheard what Zach said. Maybe Zach can repeat what he said. And now I'm doubting myself. I thought he said that if it falls within design, that those sounded like two different things to me. So maybe clarify what, where you think the.
The, the, the question we have is regards to posting anything about like leave no trace and stuff like that. So that's, that to me is more use impact and not design, but that's, that's why we're asking for clarification.
That is, that would be correct. Sorry. I heard sign and I was going back to the picture of the sign. So that was my mistake.
Yeah, it's, we're, we're not talking like posted like entryway signs, but more like leave no trace. So that it sounds like that is not appropriate to put in this DRO.
Correct. Yes, that would, I agree. That goes more towards you. Sorry. I must have missed the time we were talking about.
No, no problem. And it also sounds like from what Mr. McNeely said, that my dog is barking, if you can hear him. It sounds like what Mr. McNeely said is we already have these conditions in the original use permit that was from a few years ago. So it, it would be repetitive anyway.
Correct. I'm not, I've not seen the other conditions, but I will defer to Jess. If those, if he said those exist, then I would concur.
We usually put them in, Mr. McNeely.
Yes, this would have been a, this was a zone change as this was, is, this isn't, this is in commercial zoning. But the village, the original village camp development went through several permeations from a manufactured home park into it to an RV park. And so any conditions on the use, you know, conditions that were trying to mitigate the, the use of the RV park, those were applied back when the zoning was approved for, for the village camp RV park.
Okay. All right. So we will leave anything related to leave no trace off of this DRO process. All right. Do any other commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing any there. So does the applicant and or their representative wish to address the commission? If so, please state your name and address and go ahead and proceed with your comments. Is the applicant or their representative on the call?
The applicant is here, Jacob Robinson with Ardua, 739 Paul Drive, Prescott, Arizona. I am reviewing the packet and I do not have any questions or concerns at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you. All right. I'm going to open it up to public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this case this evening? If so, raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. Okay, not seeing any new unmutes, not seeing any hand raised. So I'm going to close it to public comment. Does the commission wish to discuss? Are we all good with this and ready for a motion? I'll see some hand raises for however you would like to proceed.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Hayward, you had your hand up. Are you this?
I, I was, I was raising my hand to say I'll second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Walsh also has her hand, her hand up, which is, do you wish to make comments? Are you ready for a motion? Commissioner Walsh, you're muted.
I was ready to make a motion to approve.
Okay, so I think we got Vice Chair Wilson and Commissioner Hayward. So let's go ahead and make that official motion and then we can move forward with that.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve DRO 25 dash zero zero four with the conditions as presented.
Commissioner Hayward, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Hayward to approve DRO dash 25 dash zero zero four. All those in favor, Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Toke?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to case number four here. It's CUP dash two five dash two four. It is a conditional use permit for residential use in a commercial zone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is CUP 2524, Bifano Residential Use in Commercial Zoning. The owner of the property is John Bifano out of Flagstaff, Arizona. And the applicant is Ronald Carter of Civil Design and Engineering, also out of Flagstaff. The property is located at 10775 Townsend Wyndona Road in Doni Park. And the zoning on the property is commercial general with a 10,000 square foot minimum. And again, the request is a CUP for residential use on a 1.59 acre commercial zone property. So this is the vicinity map showing the subject property, which is that red parcel marked CG 10,000. The parcel itself is surrounded largely by agricultural residential zoning with also one open space zoned lot. And so some details of the request, the CUP is to allow use consistent with the surrounding agricultural residential zoning. So that would involve construction of a single family residence as well as renovation of an existing building into an accessory dwelling unit. In the past, there have been attempts at commercial zoning on the property, which has left some existing infrastructure. However, there's no current commercial activity. And the rationale behind this request is that it will align the use of the property with surrounding agricultural residential zoning while retaining commercial general zoning, which preserves future commercial development opportunities. And this is an aerial photo of the subject property. You can see some of the existing infrastructure on the property. And this is the site plan. So this westernmost structure is an existing building. And this is the one that they're proposing to renovate into an accessory dwelling unit. And then in towards the center of the property is where they're proposing to place the single family dwelling. And then you can see a couple more existing structures that will be used as shed space. And then these are some photos of the site. So you can see some of the existing structures. And then this westernmost building again is going to be the accessory dwelling unit. And this is just a better picture of that building to be renovated into an ADU. So for the citizen participation plan, the applicant held a virtual meeting on May 7th where zero people were in attendance and neither staff nor the applicant has received any comments regarding this request. It should also be noted that the current owner initially pursued commercial use on the property and held a neighborhood meeting in 2024 to propose an RV park. However, neighbors at that neighborhood meeting expressed concerns and stated they would prefer residential use on the property. As for a long range plan compliance, the comprehensive plan supports public input in defining the existing and historical character of these areas and encourages developers to integrate local input into the process of creating their projects. And the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan supports development proposals being considered in the context of existing neighborhood and only being approved if compatible with and not detrimental to such character. So these are the findings of facts for a conditional use permit and the recommended conditions of approval. So that staff recommends approval of CUP 2524. Are there any questions?
Okay, we got a couple of hands flying up. All right, Vice Chair Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question relates to the similar one from earlier. Why are we doing this with a CUP when this really appears to be a zone change?
So a zone change in Doni Park would be a much more difficult process and the applicant also wants to retain the commercial zoning. In case a future commercial project comes up, that would be, work well with the community.
And, and if they wanted to do commercial activity, would that impact the, the residents? Would they have to tear the house down or something? I mean, can it be both? Residential and commercial?
That's a good question. I'm not sure.
That's, that's a great, so the, Commissioner Wilson, this is Jess with staff. That's a great question. We would call that mixed use. Because this is not in an activity center. The mixed use is not permitted by right. I, I know that's, that's a real nuance within the zoning ordinance, but this is, it's zone commercial. The applicant would like to retain commercial zoning, which, which, you know, we can certainly see the logic in wanting to retain and not lose commercial zoning. The current use the applicant can use the property for is residential. If the, if the property owner is approved for the conditional use permit to use this property as exclusively residential. And they want to add some commercial in the future, they, they can, because that's a permitted use. The conditional use was allowing the, was allowing just the, the exclusive residential use of the property. By there's several permeations, how you can get a residence on a commercial property. For instance, if they had a commercial use on this property right now and they wanted to develop a home on the site as a caretaker's residence, they could by right. But because they have, they're, they're being, they're being straightforward and they just want to go ahead and use the property for, for residential use. So that requires the conditional use permit.
Okay. The ADU that they want to develop, ADUs are limited in size based on the size of the primary residence. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
And, and will that ADU fit within that restriction?
Yes, that's going to work to make sure they can meet those standards.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Walsh, you had a question?
Hi, hi, I need to notify that I did drive by this property and observe it. I did not speak to anyone or the neighbors. I do have some questions in the bottom left-hand corner of this slide that's on the screen. There is a single Y and I believe that's part of this property. Is that correct?
Um, it looks like that is a different parcel, ending in three nine where this one ends in three eight.
Okay, thanks. In the, in this slide, under the CUP numbers, that building is going to be considered shed because that looked like a home to me. It's very large and it has two garage sized doors on it. A big garage door and a small one. It looked like.
I believe the applicant's going to use that as shed space and potentially as a garage.
Okay, and then in the upper, behind where this ADU is located on your slide here, behind there, there is a a tiny home on wheels parked there. Is that going to be removed?
Yes, so that has already been removed.
Okay. I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, do any other commissioners have any questions for staff on this? Okay. All right, does the applicant or their representative wish to address the commission? If so, go ahead and unmute and state your name and address and make your comments.
Hi, this is Ronald Carter of Civil Design and Engineering. I live at 2239 West Alaska Avenue here in Flagstaff. And yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that we had that community meeting, speaking with all the neighbors. Originally, when it was an RV CUP, we had to talk to a lot of the nearby neighborhood for that. And a lot of them reiterated, they did not like the RV use and they would have rather seen the residential use, which is why we're currently going for that residential use. It was just greatly more applauded as an option instead of the RV park. And then, yeah, I just wanted to point out that building on the east side is just kind of one large internal room. It has a garage doors. It's, it's a garage by all intensive purposes as I've seen it. And then most of the other structures are just sheds on the site.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone in, or do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any. All right, is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case? Okay, I'm not seeing any unmutes or hands raised, so I'll close the public comment portion and open up to commission discussion. Are we ready for a motion or do we wish to discuss?
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, please do.
So I, I, I just wanted to say my, my primary concern was that we might be losing commercial space within an owner residential neighborhood that otherwise doesn't have any. So I actually really do appreciate that we're doing this under a CUP and retaining that commercial use so that if someone does want to come in and put in a little general store like we saw out on our, on our work session. Now that that's, that's something that's still available. So I'm going to say to staff that I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, is there any other commission discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP 25 dash zero two four as with the conditions as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, that was Commissioner Williams seconding. All right, I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson, a commit, a second by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor, Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
Commissioner Burger?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Toke?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, brings us to number five on the agenda this evening for CUP dash 25 dash zero three one. Staff, if you want to proceed with your presentation?
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We Bob is managing this case. He has his screen shared. So go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the auto campground, CUP twenty five thirty one. In this case, the applicant is. Uh, if I can pronounce this right, TOS, TOS Auto Erickson in Flagstaff, Arizona. The location of the property is at twenty three oh seven Woodland Ranch Road and that's near Valley or. And near the Valley area plan as well. The zoning is general. That's ten acre minimum parcel size zone. The parcel size is twenty point zero three acres and the quest is for a campground. So this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. Uh, so you can see it's up on, this is Woodland Ranch Road going through. This is a large development area called Woodland Ranch. This is South Rim Ranches. Valley is to the south. That is the wrong, well, actually that is right. US Highway of sixty four, State Route sixty four is running through here up to the Grand Canyon. And this is a neighborhood map, so I wanted to show the commission what's going on in this neighborhood at this point. So we do have two campgrounds that are. One is operating, one is being developed. Wonder Camp is under operation at this point. And Inspired Adventures Camp is being developed at this point. And then there's also a. Manufactured Home Park Zone over here that that has the Sage Valley Manufactured Home Park. Woodland Ranch is a private street running through this area. It's on a private access easements. And this is the subject property. It does have this cattle guard road running through. This is not an official road. Uh, we have looked at it and it. The applicant actually has provided a survey and there is no easement on that survey. This property here actually accesses a couple of ways. One is a road they've developed up the side that hits cattle garden goes back to the property and then there's another way to get in from the other side. So this proposal is for twenty temporary dome tents. They are to be erected for. Uh, one hundred and eighty days per year. That's the standard that we have that they cannot be up more than a hundred and eighty days per year. They're not. They're temporary. They are not permanent, permanent facilities. Uh, they are proposing temporary restroom facilities on a trailer. Uh, they would operate seasonally from May first to October twenty eighth. They are looking at one fire pit fully managed and controlled by staff rather than individual fire pits throughout the campground. Uh, at this point, they would be using a generator for power. But in the future, they're indicating, hopefully in the second season, they would either be able to hook up to APS Electric. It's not that far down the road, but it's a little bit expensive to hook up to or solar power. They are proposing dark skies compliant lighting without very many specifications at this point. And they're asking that existing native plants and trees, uh, meet the landscaping requirement, not necessarily a waiver. Just that what is there is sufficient to meet that requirement. This is their site plan. On the left, you'll see the the entire property. You can see again cattle guard road going through. And, uh, and it would just be on this this corner, the southwest corner of the property. And then this is a inset that shows the actual campground. Uh, again, you're coming off of Woodland Ranch Road and they have, they've changed it quite a bit since the study session. If if you haven't noticed that. They're coming in and they're creating a circle drive through. This helps for emergency vehicles, any, you know, any other issues like that. And that they also have like parking at each of the campsites along the way. Have a nice, uh, central location for the restroom facility here. The generator would be up here, but as you can see, it's not anywhere near property line in that in that area. And this is a an example of the types of dome tents they're looking at. They, I don't believe they've got a specific design yet. Uh, but it would need to meet our building, building division requirements, which is very specific. For these types of tents and domes. This, uh, this slide shows the compliance with campground standards. So a minimum of ten acres is required. They have twenty. Maximum density is two per acre. Uh, they have twenty units total. They could have up to forty. If they come back for a modification. Uh, they're required to access on a county or publicly maintained road. This requires a waiver. Uh, and that requires that wooden road be built to a certain standard. And because of the other campgrounds that have developed out here, it has already been developed to that standard, but the applicant would be. Responsible to maintain it, to keep it at that standard and also to verify that it is currently at that standard. There's a fifty foot compatibility setback. That's confirming, as you can see, or conforming, excuse me, as you can see on the site plan. There, there is a required ratio of RVs and campsites, but no RVs are requested, so that's not relevant in this case. They have gotten a. Will serve letter from the local fire district from High Country Fire Rescue. Which is actually a a private company. And, uh. It would, it would appear to be, uh. Compatible with some of the adjacent single family development. They are requiring quiet hours from eight PM to eight AM. They have buffers from from local homes or actually just from the property line. In this case, there aren't really any homes that are around here. Or there are some developments, some scattered development. Uh, this is a photograph showing Woodland Ranch Road. You can see, I mean, it is required to be, uh. A weatherproof and it has a certain compaction level. Uh, certain width. It is a pretty large road, a little bumpy, but it is, it is a pretty good road. Uh, so this is along the frontage of the subject property. You can see some of the vegetation here along the frontage. And this is looking into the property, looking north into the property. And you can see some more vegetation up here. Some of the trees are have died in this area. Cause of the drought that we've had. This is a large pineal tree that is on the property. And this is a large shrub that is a long, large natural shrub on the property. This is kind of right on the edge of the property on the. West side. So in terms of citizen participation, uh, property owners within a thousand feet were notified. And invited to a virtual neighborhood meeting held on April thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Actually, that we might have notified neighbors further than that. That might be. Uh, mistake there. I think I thought it was more like a three quarters of a mile. Uh, two neighbors provided comments and were in support of the proposal according to the applicant's. Citizen participation report. And the applicant has addressed all concerns. These are the findings of fact for a conditional use permit. They have been addressed in the staff report. And with that, if commission can make the required findings of fact, staff recommends approval with the recommended conditions. That I'll take any questions from the commission.
Uh, Commissioner Burger.
So since spending time up at the South Rim with the fires, I guess fire is not a really popular word right now. They're going to have one big fire pit like they do out at. The snow park in the winter, but is this fire pit, they said it's managed by somebody. Has that been approved by the local fire? Department or was there any input on that?
That would be something, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Burger, yes, that would be something that we would want to get input from. From from the fire, from the local fire chief. Uh, from High Country Fire Rescue. So, um, a fire plan is. Is required as one of the conditions in the staff report. So that was something that they had proposed, but without input and. Approval by the fire chief, uh, that would not be allowed. And and yeah, I know I I actually could see the North Rim Fire when I was up here at this location, so. It's definitely something on everyone's mind, I think. But it is certainly better that, uh, that a a staff would be there at all times. Monitoring any kind of fire.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Best.
Similar question about the road. Has High Country Fire blessed the road even though it's not? You know, it may not be up to. Technical standards.
Uh, Commissioner Best, uh, yes, I believe they have at this point. So. Down the road, I'm going to go back to that slide, but. Yes, so. First of all, the Sage Valley Manufactured Home Park was required to upgrade the road. To, uh, support the public safety vehicle. All right, this forty two thousand pound vehicle. And it has other requirements as well, like an all all weather surface and et cetera, a certain width. It's a very wide road. So it's in very good condition. Uh, so both Wonder Camp. And Inspired Adventures Campground have also been required to upgrade the road all the way to their campsite. So these roads, this road has been. Upgraded and verified. By by engineers that it does meet that standard. Uh, what we want to do is make sure that they that they also verify it again, just to, you know. And be- because it it is their road, it is part of their responsibility and that they are part of the maintenance. For keeping the road up updated like that to meet that standard.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Does the applicant or the applicant's representative wish to address the commission this evening?
Hi, Tice Otto Erickson, applicant.
Can you state your, yeah, perfect, thank you.
Sure, one five seven one North Pine Cliff Drive in Flagstaff. And we're excited to be here tonight and have you hear us. Um, the, there was some. Uh, staff questions, um, and I'd like to go through those real quickly and see if I can. You know, ease anybody's mind. Yes, there, we had a Southwest Traffic Company did the impact study. On Woodland Ranch and, um, approved that. That's it in our in our package. And also on our site plan are the requirements for our driveway, the circle driveway that goes in to the property around there. And shows exactly how it should be built and we'll follow that, um, once we're approved and start building. There was another with the permits, um, for. Let's see, for the property, for the materials, for the domes, those will be tan canvas. And in those will have smoke and CO2 detectors in each unit. Uh, we've also since installed a two hundred and seventy five gallon water tank on site. That can be used for, um, fire suppression and. Um, once we actually speak to Chief Trotter, then we'll hopefully install a couple more, um, where he says would be best. So far, we've contacted him several times and haven't got a response. Uh, let's see the fence. Um, there's no additional fencing. There is one on the north side that I. I believe a neighbor installed. It's right on the property line, um, per our survey. But we won't be installing any other fence. Um, there was a concern about dust mitigation plan. That wasn't addressed in the, um, preliminary hearing. But we're glad to make that and get that submitted. We have some already set up, no trespassing signs on the west and the north side. The south boundary is the road and the east side is our property, so we won't be needing those. Um, there's another one. It was item nine. Of course, we'll all permit to be obtained before we start construction. And then there was a request that we contact all land authorities nearby to discuss any impacts with. Um, we will also document that that was with the state and the Grand Canyon representatives. Um, the public health service license will be obtained. We've already, um, spoke with them. And near the toilet trailer, it's kind of the central areas you could see in the map. Will have a sign, um, like a bulletin board there where we talk about, um. You know, how to treat the property, what kind of animals and bugs and what not to watch out for. We'll also post the leave no trace sign and a pack it in, pack it out that we've, um. Uh, adopted from Oregon and. Uh, this will also be on our website before people register that they'll they'll agree that they've seen this and read it. And we want to make it really clear that people aren't welcome to wander around because we have, you know, very sensitive. Um, landscape there. We've identified lots of cacti and other plants that we don't want people walking on. Um, all the natural landscape is going to remain the same as it as it is right now. We haven't removed a single tree. We've dug up a few bushes that look like they're going to be in the way of, you know, future work, but those are also already transplanted. And we don't see having to remove nearly anything, um, because we want it to stay exactly as it is. Uh, the weed management plan, we haven't, we didn't know about, but we will definitely come up with that and submit it. And the sign permit, we, um, will also submit. The lighting plan, um, is also, of course, dark sky compliant. And we've, um, sent a. An example photo of one that we could be using. Um, we'll turn those, you know, more documentation in as we go. Um, I hope I've answered any questions there may be. Um, we're excited to be out in the neighborhood. There's a neighbor next to us, Jamie. Who's been a really nice fellow and helped us with, um, finding, you know, local contractors that we couldn't talk to. And Wander Camp and the other camp just down the road with the manufactured homes. We feel like we fit right in. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, doesn't look like it. All right, um, okay, let's. See if there's anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case. Is there anyone in the public? Wants to speak on this case this evening? I am not seeing any hands or any unmutes, so. It looks like no public comment, so I'll close it to public comment. Does the, we'll open it to commission discussion. Does anyone? Need to discuss anything further on this? Is that, are we ready for a motion? I'm hearing crickets, so I'm guessing we're probably ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve case number CUP twenty five zero three one.
I'll second that.
Okay, who's seconded?
Mary.
Okay, all right. I have a motion by Commissioner Best and a second by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor, uh, Commissioner Hayward.
Aye.
Commissioner Burger.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Taoki.
Aye.
This is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, on to the sixth item. It looks like it is, uh, CUP dash two five dash zero two zero. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Distler RV as a, as a residence, actually as a permanent residence. CUP twenty five twenty. And in this case, the elder is the Distler family, Distler family revocable trust at LTD. Of Gilbert, Arizona. The applicant's Rick Distler of Gilbert. Location of the property is, uh, Lake Shore Drive at Mormon Lake and designed as AR one. One acre minimum parcel size. This is a vicinity map showing, uh, the subject property. You can see this is Mormon Lake here. And this is the Mormon Lake area where you go around the blue, the main commercial area right here. And this is a residential area. And this is a, a little subdivision that was created way back. So, uh, I want to show a neighborhood map as well. You can kind of get, uh, look at the neighborhood here. This is something called Lakeside Caverns, Cabin Site Subdivision. It was, uh, flatted in nineteen twenty six. And pretty much all the lots in this subdivision are not meeting the full acre standard. They're, um. In this case, this property, of course, is point two acres, point two eight acres and, uh. They, they're, they're all legal nonconforming basically. And this is aerial photo of the subject property right along Lake Shore Drive. And this is the request, use an RV as a. And this is the request, use an RV as a permanent residence on a point-two-eight acre parcel in the AR1 zone. Water, according to the applicant, the water would be hauled, waste of water would be disposed of at a dump station. A generator is proposed for electricity. They don't plan on putting any future single-family homes on the property. They do plan on putting a metal roof over the RV and a deck they would construct on the front, at the front of the RV. And the RV would be occupied between a quarter and half of the year, basically. It's, it's a, a summer home to get the applicant out of the heat in the valley. Site plan showing where the RV would be located. And this is a photo of the RV currently being parked on the property. And this is a landscape and screening plan. So basically, it's, the applicant is showing that there would be a canopy cover over the trailer and, and the deck. It'd have lattice skirting around it and they're, they're showing some shrubs up in the front right here. This is like a metal cover over it, a metal roof over it. So in terms of citizen participation, neighbors within three hundred feet of the subject property were invited to a neighborhood meeting held on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five on the adjacent property that is also owned by the owner. And I just wanted to point out to the commission that three hundred feet is our standard for RV as permanent residence and, you know, we don't really change that for this particular type of case. Four neighbors expressed verbal support for the proposal, according to the citizen participation report, and two neighbors were not in support. The two neighbors opposed cited the visual appearance of the RV in an area that is developed with single-family homes. And I also wanted to note that one of the neighbors that opposed this project owns ten properties within three hundred feet and actually thirteen within this area, so they own quite a few properties, although it's only one person. And I wanted, I had a map done to show you how that plays out. This is the subject property here. This is a property owned by the applicant as well. In green, you'll see there were four neighbors that supported the property. And in red, you'll see the properties owned by those that didn't support this project. These are all owned by the same person and then these as well, and then this is another person right here, right adjacent to the subject property that didn't support this. And kind of looking up the hill past that RV that I showed you earlier, this is one of the houses of the person, the person that owns ten of the properties around that did not support this application. And this is neighborhood pictures as requested by Madam Chair at the study session. So we're looking, this is the subject property, you can kind of see it right here. You're looking up north and this is, this is a neighbor, they're actually working on their house now. That's why you have some stuff out here, you know, some building material, storage and things like that. And this is looking in the other direction. Again, you can see the RV parked on the subject property. And you could also see the house owned by the applicant next door. This is on a separate property next door and they have an RV as well parked in the yard there. So this is looking back down to the south. And I wanted to show you just some typical houses. There's a lot of variety of houses. There's some nicer ones and not such nice ones in this area, you know, some more simple housing. So that's, that's an example of a house up the hill above this. That's another example of houses or cabins in this area. And there's also, you know, there's some RVs stored on properties or parked on properties that is allowed. They are not supposed to be living in the RVs, but they can park them on the property that is without a permit. There's more RVs that are being stored on properties. These are the findings of fact for conditional use permit. They've been addressed in your staff report. And with that, if the commission can make the findings, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty-five zero-two-zero with the recommended conditions. And are there any questions from the commission?
All right, Vice Chair Wilson.
Mr. Short, was the map that you showed us of the neighboring comments, when was that last updated? Does that reflect most current data with all the emails we received recently?
This is, yeah, this is current. This was done last week, so it does, it does show, is this what you're talking about?
Yeah, so we haven't received any additional input since this map was created, is that correct?
No, we have not received any additional input. And the property was, of course, posted and everything and neighbors were notified again.
Okay, and in one of the letters that someone submitted, there was some question about the accuracy of the, the public notice letters. The lot number was wrong apparently and there were some other questions. Is, is that correct?
I'm not aware of any issues with that. What, what happens is so noticing, actually this reflects that as well. Noticing goes out to property owners, not renters, of course, property owners within three hundred feet, right, in this case. So what we do is we look at the assessor's records of who owns the property. And, you know, it might not be up to date, it's possible it's not, but that, that, that's what we look at because that's, that's our best information. So everything here is, I mean, noticing and the list that was sent out to the applicant that they were to use for their, to invite people to the neighborhood meeting, it's all based on that.
In our package on page one oh seven, there's a comment from a neighbor and it says that the wrong parcel detail was used on the letter.
Oh, oh, right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that, that did occur initially. I apologize, Vice Chair Wilson. That did occur initially, that was quite some time ago and we actually went back at that point and, and I said, I required the applicant to go over, go back and start all over again.
So new letters were sent and a new public meeting was held?
Exactly, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Short, are there any other RVs used for permanent residence? I mean, it seems like there are a lot of RVs around, but are any of them approved for residency?
Commissioner Best, no, we have, we haven't had any other RVs in this area approved for, for permanent residency.
Thank you very much.
Do any of the other commissioners have questions for staff? One of the questions that I had was if the applicant has, and it may be that the applicant answers me, if the applicant has a home on the adjacent property, why are they requesting a RV as a permanent residence? Are you able to answer that, Mr. Short, or do I need to wait for the applicant?
That would be a question for the applicant to answer.
Okay. All right, um, okay, if there's no other questions of staff, then I'm going to ask if the applicant or their representative wishes to address the commission. If so, state your name and address and proceed with your comments and hopefully you can answer my question as well. Yes, Mr. Distler. You are muted.
All right. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
My name is Rick Distler. I have the adjacent property at five-twenty Lake Shore. To answer your question, this is to park my brother-in-law's RV, which technically is another park model, but this, I might easily be pulled down the road because it does have three slide outs that slide in and it's eight foot wide. Where traditionally, that's what park models were made in the nineteen-seventies. I used to work it for a RV as the service manager and all we sold was park models. They were eight foot. Now, in the late eighties, they went twelve feet wide. This is the old design where it's actually eight feet wide with three slide outs, but it's for my brother-in-law to get out of the heat in the summer. Nothing in the winter. It's a, it's a three-season RV or park model. But there's no intention of going up there after the first hard freeze. Anything else? My wife, Linda?
The other reason we went for the permit over just parking it, because we do have the temporary use, was so that we could put a canopy over it and leave it up there in the winter. We had a permit to get the builders to build a canopy. So all these permits had to come together for us to be able to, to do what we'd like to do with the trailer and make it more.
And the picture shown right now is not the picture of the RV. The other RV was shown on another slide. If Bob could scroll. It's actually a forty-four foot. That one's probably a twenty-eight. My friend's parking it there in the summer. He's getting eye surgery.
Okay, so the, the image, so the image we're seeing is not the trailer that's going to be parked there?
That is correct. The one that will be parked there is, it's a forty-four foot with three slide outs.
Okay, like a destination trailer?
If Bob has a picture of that, we need to see it.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I can bring that up. This was the RV on the property, so it was assumed that this is it, but they did provide pictures of another RV.
That RV is actually on the lot that the cabin is on. There's nothing on the property we're discussing at this time. Bob, if you scroll either back, we can get a little glimpse of it, or if I can share a picture, I have a picture of it ready to share. I don't know.
Well, I, I have some I can pull up.
He's here. It was in the, through the trees in the far left on the picture.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that the RV this is the RV? Yeah. Some better pictures, let me pull those up.
And that's one, two years ago when we were building, rebuilding the cabin, doing a lot of repairs. That's one we're been in. It's just sitting there stored right now.
And, and am I correct? Do you already have a temporary use permit?
We did, but we're not using it now.
Okay.
Give me one second, I'll pull that up for you. And, yeah, it was, I apologize, it was a little confusing because we went to the property and this RV is on the property, so we thought, you know, I felt like this was the RV they were proposing, but I did get other photos as well.
Technically, so, technically it's on the other lot. It's not sitting on the property we're discussing. There's, make an orange steak, right, the very, like, the left front corner. Yeah.
It's a lot larger RV.
Yep, that's it. And then we want to put a twenty fifty canopy over the top of it and I'll ask the neighbors on the hill behind me what color they'd like the metal to be for them, if, if this is allowed, you know, he can, he can pick the color, whether it's blue or green or or gray. It's up to him because he's the one that'll see it. We won't. That's all I have to say.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Distler. At this time, I want to open it up to the public and see if there's anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, raise your hand or unmute. I will call on you and ask that you state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to address the commission. Anybody? Mr. McNeely, are you seeing anyone? I'm not. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, Chair Burton, I'm, I'm scrolling here and I do not see, see one phone number ending in seven-five-one-three. But otherwise, I do not see anyone unmuted and I do not see anyone's hand up.
Okay. All right, well, then I will, not seeing any public, I will go ahead and close it to public discussion and open it up to commission discussion. So I think we'll go around the room on this one, just to see how everybody's feeling on this application. Let's start with Commissioner Hayward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not feeling great on this one, to be honest. I, uh, you know, this is, this is a very small lot in a neighborhood that really is primarily site-built, small site-built cabins. You know, so I, I I, I've spent the time, you know, trying to go back through zoning code and looking at the, the findings that are in the, in the staff report. You know, and I, I it feels to me that we, we give folks the option to do this specifically right to provide lower-cost alternatives for, for permanent housing and more rural sections of the, of the county. You know, that, that, this won't be used for that. It's, it's, it's just a vacation use. So I just don't think that that supports it. So I'm, I'm really struggling, but I'm, I'm leaning to no on this one for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and as I understand, they could just do a temporary use permit every year and keep using it as they have been. From what it sounded like is they'd like to kind of add additional, like, screening, like, the cover and a deck and stuff, so I, I don't know if that has any relevance on how you're feeling on this because as I understand, they could just come back each year for a temporary use permit, use it in the summer and then go back home again.
Madam Chair, that is correct. Just confirm, they can get a hundred-and-twenty-day permit, which allows them to keep up there for four months and we've actually even, you know, they, it's legal to park an RV on a property, so we're allowed parking as well, even when it's not in use.
So for, yeah, I'll, I'll go with my feelings when I get to my turn, so, Commissioner Burger?
If I were a homeowner and put a bunch of money into the house, absolutely what David is saying. However, we can have our opinions, but what is allowed to be on the property is a different level of conversation and they're willing to try to make it visually appeasing to and appealing to their neighbor. I'll give them that. So I, I don't know that we really have a choice on this one. If you're saying, Madam Chair, that they can just get a conditional use permit and we're out. So I, I just say at least they're trying, you know, to appease their neighbor at this point. So if we can't say no, then we go the alternative route, which is being a good neighbor, right, so?
Okay, Commissioner Walsh?
I, I've got mixed feelings about it. You, as well, I think the temporary use permit is probably the way to go. Especially since I know it's one owner of all these properties around it, but there is quite, that's a lot of opposition. So I'm, at this moment, I'm not able to make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I think my feeling right now is that they can get a temporary use permit and that would meet most of their needs, I think. And that's something that's allowed. You know, we just went agonized about this other case about, you know, sort of opening the door to the can of worms and it was like, well, You know, we just went agonized about this other case about, you know, sort of opening the door to the can of worms. And it was like, well, you know, it's a park model. That's one thing. But if it's a, you know, fiberglass or aluminum or an RV, something that really looks like an RV that you're going to hook up and pull down the road. Um, I think just because you don't want to, isn't enough justification to sort of open that can of worms because it's right on the road. It's right in an area of stick-built homes. So what, you know, I mean, it really is kind of how are we going to say no to the next person that wants to put a trailer more permanently on their property. Um, so I, I am not in favor of, I, I can't make the findings at this point. I, I would say a temporary use permit, fine, perfect. Um, because that, it's allowed. So I mean, it might look better if it has a cover, but I don't think that that's enough justification to sort of open up this can of worms going down the road.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Best.
I, I agree. This just does not fit the neighborhood and I, I don't want to support it. You know, if this was the, the cutest little park model that really looked like a little cabin, that might be one thing, and maybe it's something the applicant could consider. But, um, a great big aluminum box, uh, with the slide outs just is not consistent with the the homes in the area. So I cannot make the findings.
Okay, Vice Chair Wilson.
Due to the density of that neighborhood and the stick-built homes that surround this house or this, the site, um, I, I'm having a real difficult time making the findings, specifically finding B. Um, and I think, I, I understand wanting to put a a roof over the top of it, but I don't think that's going to do anything to change the character of the appearance in that neighborhood of that RV. So I, I cannot make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe.
I, um, do not make the findings based on a lot of the things, um, people have said. And I think it's really important to just keep the, um, the then I guess the identity of the, of the neighborhood right now, because there's a lot of more homes, um, that are stick-built. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, this is Chair Burton. Um, this one I do go back and forth a lot on, um, because they can do the TUP every year and continue to use it as is and stay up there in the summer. Um, I think it's, I think it's good that they're trying to do something more and, and make it a little more comfortable. Um, try to dress it up a little, but, um, I also am having trouble with have giving them a hard time about this when a lot of those other neighbors have unscreened trailers parked on their property. So that is another thing that is supposedly those aren't being lived in. So yes, that is a completely different scenario, but there is a lot of unscreened trailers. So for me, character is not really the impact. Um, in this for me, because those trailer, trailers are all over the place out there. Um, I am struggling with this one because of that. And I mean, it basically sounds, even if I were to say yes, it sounds like I'm unanimously outvoted anyway. By everybody's else's, um, everybody else's feelings on this. So I, I do, I, I want to echo what Commissioner Best said. And it was honestly my number one thing when I was starting to, when I was struggling with this was if this were like a cabin-esque park model home that looked like a little cabin, looked like a stick-built, I, I wouldn't hesitate. It would be absolutely. Um, but because it is an older-looking trailer with the metal siding, that's where I'm struggling. But again, and I'm also, all the neighbors have a whole bunch of trailers parked on their properties. So, um, I think because this is specifically for somebody to stay in, I mean, we have four people who were, who were for it and including one of the directly, um, direct neighbors. And then we had people who were not. Their visual screening would be the cover because they're above it, not in front of it. I, I think because they can do the temporary use permit and there is enough opposition and it is a smaller lot, I will also agree that I can't make the findings for the conditional use. And I do think that they should just continue to do the temporary use permit, which does not improve the visual aesthetics for people, which that part does bother me. You know, they're wanting to build up some stuff and improve some appearance. So if they can't do that, I mean, it's, it's keeping things as is. So really, hmm, you know? Um, but it sounds like the majority of the commissioners, even though they're kind of wishy-washy like me, sounds like everybody's kind of has their mindset. Do I have that right? If I do, then I think it's time for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Mister, Mister Short has his hand up.
Oh, Madam Chair, I just wanted to, to remind the commission that we do need to call out specifically what findings that you aren't able to make. So that could be in the record.
Yeah. So Vice Chair Wilson, we need a very specific finding that you cannot make.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we disapprove, or that we deny CUP twenty-five dash zero-two-zero as presented. And in my case, because I cannot make finding B Bravo.
I need a second.
Commissioner Hayward, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Hayward, second. All right. So I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson, um, for denial and a second by Commissioner Hayward. Uh, when I, when I go around the room, I need you to specifically state what finding you cannot make and why. Um, okay, Commissioner Hayward.
About I, um, as I cannot make finding B, um, as I believe it would be materially injurious to the properties, uh, in the vicinity.
Okay, Commissioner Burger.
Same, uh, under condition B, I cannot make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Walsh.
Um, I'm going to go with, uh, condition B. Also, I cannot make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
I cannot make the findings and, um, B would be the reason why.
Okay, Commissioner Best.
I cannot make the findings and I would say both A and B.
Okay. Uh, Vice Chair Wilson.
I cannot make the findings, uh, Bravo and because it's materially injurious to the properties improvements in the vicinity.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe.
I will say, um, condition B or finding B. And it would be materially injurious.
Okay. Um, I cannot make the findings and I would say that it is B, um, as well as A. So it looks like we are unanimous and we are not able to make the findings on this CUP. Is there anything else we need, Mr. McNeely?
Madam Chair, no. Um, yeah, we've got, uh, we've got your vote in the record and, uh, and how the findings could not be made. So I think, I think we've got what we need.
Okay. All right. We'll, uh, let them continue to do the temporary use permit. And let's go ahead and move on to the last case of the evening, which is, uh, case number CUP dash two-five dash two-two.
Madam Chair, would you be willing to grant a three-minute recess?
If we need a quick bathroom break, yes, we can take a quick three-minute recess. We'll reconvene at, uh, seven fifty-three.
Mary, I'm impressed with your fortitude.
It's a, it's a, it's a horsewoman's bladder is what it is.
I, I think Commissioner Hayward was concerned that we might be here just a little bit longer with the last case and one of that little break stuck in there, which is always fine by me. You guys can we've got some echoes going on. You guys can always ask me when you want a break. Feel free to speak up.
Yeah, we've only got two law firms on this case, so I'm sure it'll go really fast.
I am getting a lot of echoing here. I need, uh, people to mute.
See if we can help with that, Madam Chair.
All right, is everybody back? Mr. McNeely, does it look like everybody's back? All the, all the key players here on the commission side?
Commissioners should turn their video on at least so we can see that they're there.
Well, Cortina can't, but.
Um, as I, oh yeah, Vice, Vice Chair Wilson, I couldn't do it. I've already voiced that. Um, I apologize, but I can't. I'll have to have IT fix it.
All right. I'm here. Okay, hopefully we're all back. Um, all right, if, uh, I, I need everybody, um, to mute, please. There, I see at least Jordan, there we go. Thank you. All right. Um, okay, let's get right back into it. Mr. Schwartz.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. And this case is CUP twenty-five zero-two-two, the Castellani Horse Boarding Conditional Use Permit Case. The property owner and applicant is Ryan Castellani of Munn's Park. Representative is Jordan Greenman of Phoenix, Arizona. Property location is at two-two-seven-seven-zero Fox Ranch Road. It's a twelve-acre parcel in the general zone, which is typically a single-family residential and agricultural zone. This request is for a conditional use permit for a horse boarding facility. Here's a vicinity map. So we are south of Munn's Park. This is Foxborough Ranch subdivision. And this is sort of a subdivided area here with the subject property highlighted in bluish green. Um, it's surrounded by other properties in the general zone and also Coconino National Forest to the north. There is a little bit strangely of RR two and a half zone up here also in this, uh, general area. This is the subject property. So you would exit a little bit, uh, northwest of what is shown on the map. You would exit on Fox Ranch Road and then come down through Forest Service here, um, and then over, uh, neighboring property to this little flag portion of the subject property. And here is the subject property. Uh, there is an existing riding arena here, horse stables here and home here. Um, and as you can see, only the northern portion of the property is, uh, vegetated. So this photo right here is taken from sort of the southwestern uh, corner of the property. The flag does extend back past the top photo. But, uh, based, and I meant to mention, so there's one existing home site on this adjacent property. The rest of the properties that are adjacent are vacant. Um, so again, this is sort of the southern property boundary and the adjacent home site is sort of to the left of the photo here. So you can see what it sort of looks like looking north to the existing infrastructure here. And then this photo in the bottom left is taken from the pasture just south of the riding arena. And you can see it a little bit closer, everything. And here's a picture from north looking south, uh, so you can get a better idea of what the stables look like. For details on this request, they're looking to board up to twelve horses and existing horse stalls. They would also use the existing a hundred and fifty foot by two hundred and fifty foot riding arena and round pen. Clients would park in an existing circulation area onsite. It's sort of central on the property. And they're not requesting to build anything else on the property for this use. The hours of operation would be nine to five and anticipated traffic would be one to two third-party vehicle trips per day. And client horse trailers would only be on the site for the initial drop-off and pickup of the horses. The applicant's narrative states that they're not looking to do any special events or night riding. And I do want to mention that the subject property is on a shared well. Uh, but the applicant's narrative states that for this use specifically, that they plan to drill a new well or haul water for this use. And the applicant also plans to screen the parking area with ten gamble oak trees. So this is a site plan of the subject property. It's basically everything that you saw in the aerial photo. The zoning ordinance has a number of animal keeping requirements and I apologize for the busyness of this, uh, map that I created here. But I'm going to try to go through and, um, mention all of the requirements for the keeping of horses on this property. So the first is that horse stalls must be at least fifty-five feet away from a property line. And looking at the site plan, it does, this is apparently fifty-seven feet long. This measurement here, it doesn't appear that the stall is meeting that setback. Uh, and the second requirement is that the stalls be at least a hundred and fifty feet away from a water source. So the base map here is a USGS map that shows water sources. It shows, uh, Woods Tank, the closest water source to this subject property. It shows Woods Tank, the closest water source to this subject property. Shows Wood Spring and these streams that are the dotted blue lines here. So the, this measurement from here to here is one hundred and fifty feet. And the stables are far out of the way of, of that setback there. But the applicant is, in addition to removing the manure from the site weekly through waste management, uh, which is what the applicant is requesting to do or what they do do currently as well, I believe. Uh, they're also looking to spread manure um, in this pasture area right here that's south of the riding arenas. And for the spread of manure on the property, they have to be at least five hundred feet away from a water source. So these are staff's approximations of five hundred feet from that water source. And it appears that this pasture area will be meeting those requirements. But staff does recommend the condition that we receive a new site plan that would show all of these requirements met, just to be sure. As far as access and road maintenance, again, the property's access, you can see it here, actually. The exit for Fox Road from the seventeen, uh, going south and still through Forest Service until you get about here to the subject property. So staff originally did not see this road on the Forest Service map, uh, motor vehicle map as open to the public. And so the assumption there is that it is closed to the public and therefore anybody who uses that road needs to get a special use permit from the Forest Service to be able to use it. And in that permit, they would um, accept maintenance liability over that portion of the road. Uh, staff did receive through the applicant's documentation from the Forest Service, verifying that the road is actually open to the public. And so the applicant does have, they are part of a maintenance agreement for parts of Fox Ranch Road through the private properties. Um, but it's unknown as to whether or not the Forest Service does maintain this portion of road. What I'll say is that the applicant's traffic accounts that they laid out in their narrative are pretty low. Regarding citizen participation, the applicant received comments primarily via email and they did not have a neighborhood meeting. The reason behind that is because the vast majority of property owners in the area and especially within five hundred feet do not live uh, in the area. And so they weren't able to attend a meeting. But the applicant did receive comments from six neighbors within five hundred feet of the subject property. Um, all opposed to this case for various, uh, for various reasons. Uh, those reasons being road maintenance, traffic, shared well use for horse boarding, uh, aesthetics of parking horse trailers and other vehicles on the property, manure management, potential temporary events and just general, uh, the neighbors did not feel like this request is consistent with the neighborhood character and they were generally opposed to any commercial uses in the area. And staff's response to the road maintenance, so they do, they are included in a road maintenance agreement. That does not cover portions of the road over the Forest Service. But again, the applicant is not requesting that much traffic. And it's consistent with sort of the rural and residential area. As far as shared well use for the horse boarding, the applicant did propose drilling a new well or hauling water. So they wouldn't be using the shared well. Regarding aesthetics of parking horse trailers and vehicles on the property, the applicant proposes the screening. And the commission has seen the photos from the southern portion of the property where it's the activity is happening pretty far north of where neighboring properties mostly would see it. And regarding manure management, the applicant did note that they are hauling manure off the property weekly through um, waste management. Staff did see a dumpster on the property on visiting. Uh, and also it appears that the other manure management requirements of the zoning ordinance are met through the site plan. But staff will again request that updated site plan to verify. And regarding the temporary events, the applicant's narrative notes that they wouldn't do any public events or evening activities. As of Monday, staff received uh, hand-delivered opposition letters from two attorney's offices. And they did echo some of the same concerns noted in the citizen participation plan. Uh, but they also included some other concerns. One was that they felt that one neighbor, and that's the neighbor with an existing home nearest to this property was not notified or allowed to comment for this citizen participation plan. And uh, staff doesn't have any evidence of that. Staff's um, see, looking at the citizen participation plan, it includes addresses and names of everybody who was mailed out to, and it did include that neighbor. Uh, also staff mailed public notices to neighbors within five hundred feet and posted a notice on the property. Um, letting people know of how to join this hearing tonight. And any neighbor can speak here tonight if they'd like. Regarding, uh, they also brought up an issue about maintenance of a water crossing on Fox Ranch Road. Uh, it happens before you get to the subject property and I have a map on the next slide that will show you um, that water crossing. And the applicant did state to staff that they participate in the maintenance of that crossing as part of their road maintenance agreement. Let's see, so. Yeah, there, there were concerns from these attorneys over and their clients over general maintenance of portions of Fox Ranch Road over the Forest Service. They had concern over horse boarding potentially already happening on the property and staff doesn't have evidence for that. And they had concern over potential conflict with an adjacent conservation easement. So I do want to show the water crossing and conservation easement. Um, sort of an odd shaped conservation easement. Um, it does abut the subject property directly, just right on this portion here and right on the, I believe on the flag portion here at the bottom of the subject property. But staff doesn't see any conflict with the proposed use and conservation values related to this easement. Um, so here is the water crossing. It appears on aerial imagery to sort of straddle the line between Forest Service and private land on this property. And there are photos of it. These are kind of large if anybody wants to see them under, but there's a culvert, there are culverts under this and it's paved through the property. By the way, the whole road from the exit is paved from Fox Ranch Road all the way through. There are places where it's a varying quality and um, some places it's better than others. And this water crossing is, is better than most of it. But also on this slide, as long as I was making it, I thought I would take the opportunity to show the commission where all of the property owners opposed were. So everywhere where you're seeing a star is showing a property owner opposed. Notably, not this neighboring property owner with a, that's where the property is developed with the home. As far as conformance with long range plans, only the comprehensive plan applies here. There is a goal and two policies related to this proposed use. And the goal of the land use and growth element of the comprehensive plan supports conserv- conservation of unfragmented landscapes and rural character. The policy supports commercial project, projects that are compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And there's a policy encouraging projects that pay a roughly proportional share of off-site improvements such as roads. There's a community character goal that supports rural character, conservation of open space and natural resources, as well as economic vitality. And an economic development policy that supports businesses that are compatible with the natural environment and benefit their communities. As far as findings of fact, because there's some controversy here, I'd like to read for the commission and the audience the findings of fact and staff's responses to them. So the first is that the proposed location of the conditional use is in accord with the objectives of this ordinance and purpose of the zone in which the site is located. Staff's response is that the subject property is located within the general zone, which allows horse boarding for more than two horses with an approved conditional use permit. Horse boarding is consistent with the rural character of the zone. Finding B is that the proposed location of the conditional use and the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And staff's response is that the applicant's proposed horse boarding use is consistent with the rural character of the area. A twelve acre property in the general zone is allowed up to twenty-four, twenty-five horses for personal use. And the applicant's request is for boarding of up to twelve. No additional construction is requested in the applicant's road maintenance agreement. Proposed screening, hours of operation and low proposed traffic would mitigate impacts to neighboring properties. Finding C is that the proposed conditional use will comply with each of the applicable provisions of this ordinance, except for approved variances. Staff's response is that the proposed conditional use will comply with them uh, without the need for any variances. And finding D is that the proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. And staff does find that the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan that were noted on the last slide, that this request is consistent with those. So with that, if the Planning and Zoning Commission can make all required findings of fact, staff recommends approval of case CUP twenty-five zero-two-two, subject to the conditions of the staff report as shown on your screen. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a couple of questions. I, I think I've resolved the conservation area issue, but apparently the uh, people who ride their horses are riding out into the national forest. And the property does share a, a property line with the national forest. And is it correct that there are no conservation uh, areas out that way? So we don't have to worry about that. It's just open forest?
Commissioner Best, I'm not aware of any conservation areas there. I did, and I forgot to attach. I did have the applicant send me a map of uh, forest, um, forest trails that are where equestrian use is allowed. And that would be something um, where maybe the applicant could pass that on to their borders.
Okay, but it, is there a trail into the national forest and has the applicant contacted the national forest?
There are trails nearby. Um, I'm not sure if the applicant has, so I would have them address it when it's their time.
Okay, and also um, there, there is a, there seem to be space for uh, manure out in the field there away from water sources, but it's right next to the adjacent neighbor, uh, which would probably not make him happy. Is there some, any restriction about putting manure up to the property line?
There's no restriction about putting manure up to the property line. The manure restriction really is more about protecting these water sources. Um, and so I don't, there is a manure composting provision that I think is a little bit more strict. The applicant didn't note that they had anything that they wanted to do on that end. But if they do, it's a zoning ordinance requirement that's already built in.
But they could put the manure right up to the property line at this point?
No, well, yeah, if they're spreading it this way, if they're doing composting, I believe that there's a setback for that and I could research that.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you very much.
Okay, I would like to ask anyone who is not a commissioner needs to put their hand down. This is not public discussion time. All right, uh, Commissioner Hayward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, my first question, Zach, is on slide twelve. Would you mind going back to that one? So when we look at these, these stars, um, I'm, if I'm counting right, uh, uh, I think it's eight of those are the same property owner, right?
I believe, many of them are the same property owner. I know that one property owner over here owns a few of them. Um, these are, I believe, different property owners. I, I could pull up the ownership information, but offhand.
Trust and stuff, but it's all, all, all the same folks. Um, and then, so we ha, and then we act, we only have two houses currently in this area other than on the subject property?
That's correct, just right here and right here.
So, so.
And this one uses a different access as well.
So, and the other ones are just vacant lots?
That's correct.
Got it. Um, and then, uh, in regards to, to horse boarding, boarding, um, and that we're in the G-zone here, um, if this was, if this had been subdivided and, and developed under a residential zoning, how would horse boarding apply?
Right, so Commissioner Hayward, the, the general zone is basically a single family residential and agricultural zone. So it does allow, there is a home on the property and it does allow for agricultural uses. And all of the properties in this area uh, would be allowed to similar uses too.
And so if it was, i-if it was an AR, we'd be, we'd be talking about the same thing, a kind of combination of of agricultural and, and residential uses?
That's correct. AR has the same animal keeping allowances as the general zone.
And do, do most of the zones that we're, we're looking at have that same thing?
Yeah, so these are all general zones. There's a few RR two and a half up here.
No, sorry, Zach, I was asking in general, not specific to this project.
Could you state it again, please?
Yeah, so, so in, in general, in the county, do residential zones allow for those agricultural uses?
That's correct.
Yep, okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Berger. Um, just for clarification purposes, somewhere in here, not sure where I read it, and thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it says somewhere in here that the person is leasing the property. Are they the actual property owners? The applicant?
Right. My understanding was that they owned the property, Castellani.
Okay, um, second is, um, I think the, the intentions of the owners that were opposing this just didn't have the clear intentions because it says there's only going to be one person in the house. Uh, it's going to be run and taught for the kids, but then now it's saying that, you know, they're going to be, they're going to be boarding for multiple uh, horse owners. So I think they're just a little bit of static between what the actual intention was for the owner versus what the neighbors are observing in the overall plan. Um, it's, it, I don't, it's just going to be one person in the house doing all of this, which is the owner. He's teaching his kids the business. So I guess maybe it's just a clarification thing that might be helpful here. Um, and then the adjacent cattle, um, I don't know wh-where that's going, but probably need to clarify that a little bit better um, as to what that concern is, because I'm not clear on that either. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Zach, can you tell us what the historic use of this property has been? Obviously, it's a horse facility. There was no boarding before. It was just a private horse ownership kind of thing?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Wilson, I am not completely sure about the history. I did read in some of the neighbor comments that potentially horse boarding had happened here before. There wasn't any sort of approval for that. And I'm not familiar with it, but perhaps the applicant could answer that for you.
Okay, and then the second question is, in part of the applicant's narratives, talks about one to two trips per day um, on the road. And I'm wondering that if you have. And I'm wondering that if you have 12 horses and you have apparently a family living on site, and you have water being hauled in, and you have manure being hauled out, how you arrive at one to two trips per day? Do you know how that traffic number was arrived at?
I don't know exactly how it was arrived at. I know that the applicant states specifically third-party trips. But I'm sure the applicant will be happy to clarify that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Can you tell me, are the properties to the east, southeast of the subject property? Or is that the property where we denied an application for that big, huge summer camp years ago? Does everybody remember that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Williams. I, I don't, I don't believe this is it. But I'm also not sure exactly what case that you're describing.
I, I could almost swear because I remember going out there with Don Walters when he was the chair. And we came in the other road. And we did a big tour out there and it was going to be a big summer camp, you know, with all kinds of buildings and kids and a big operation. And we denied it. And I'm, I'm sure it was on this property. So anyway, I mean, if nobody remembers specifically, but I, I could almost be sure that that project got denied. My other question is, is one of the other property owners, just to the north, the one that has 22205, don't they have horses there? Because I almost remember seeing horses there, we, when we came in that, that way. And I'm just curious.
Yeah, so Commissioner Williams, I, I think I don't remember whatever case that you're talking about, so I wouldn't have been along on that trip. What I can say is I just went straight down here without going over this road or looking over here too much, to be quite honest with you. So I wasn't aware if they have horses or not. Certainly, the allowance would be that any of these properties could.
Right. And then besides that one, and then the, you know, the, the neighbor right next door, that old house, none of the other properties are built on at this point, right?
That's correct.
There's nobody else living out there.
That's correct to my knowledge. I didn't see anything else out here.
Okay. Thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for staff? Tina and Mary, your hands are still raised. All right, since it looks like we don't have any more questions for staff, I'd like to open it to the applicant or their representative to address the commission and maybe to answer some of those questions that commissioners have posed. So if you could state your name and address for the record and go ahead and make your presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Lovely. Jordan Greenman, Greenman Law Firm, 1621 West Willada Street, Phoenix, Arizona 85007, here on behalf of Ryan Castellani and his wife, Christie, or as they will be known, RC Stables. I have a presentation, and I've worked very closely with Zach on it. I'd like to thank Zach for his time and his effort on this. Madam Chair, are you comfortable with me sharing this presentation itself? I believe it would clear up several of the issues that the commissioners have raised and that the neighbors have raised as well.
Yes, please do.
Lovely. Thank you. Can everybody see the PowerPoint slide?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Give me one second. Let me get all my screens back together. Okay, so you can only see the, the PowerPoint slide, correct?
Correct. I mean, we can see your little border of the, but yes.
I just, I wanted to make sure I wasn't resharing the same team screen. Okay, once again, my name is Jordan Greenman with Greenman Law Firm here on behalf of the Castellani family, and I'd like to thank everyone for staying awake for this hearing. I know it's dragged down a little bit longer than we've expected. We're here today to request a conditional use permit at 22770 at Fox Ranch Road. This is Munn's Park. I am working on behalf of the family itself. A quick introduction about the parcel. It is located within unincorporated Coconino County. It is a 12-acre parcel, not included in any area plan. The zoning is G, which is general. And as Zach mentioned quite eloquently, it is meant for rural mixed with agricultural uses like boardings, stables, through things like a conditional use permit. The setting itself nearby is rural itself. It has open landscapes, very low density. To the west and to the south is the I-17, approximately 608, 100 feet away respectively. It is surrounded by several other generally zoned parcels in all directions, except to the northeast, which is the forest itself. This is the regional location, just to give you an idea where we are. We're five miles south of Munn's Park. This is the aerial view. Again, we are 400 feet east of I-17. Now, something Zach had mentioned earlier, if you look just to the east of our parcel itself, there is what looks to be a, a home, maybe an RV just to the immediate east. I know we had discussed that potentially everything nearby is vacant. Most of the properties nearby are vacant, and we will discuss that shortly. This is how the property looks just from I-17. It is very close to the freeway itself. This is how it is accessed off exit 317 directly off of Fox Ranch Road. And as Zach mentioned earlier, it is paved. It is not a dirt road, and it is meant for two-way traffic. You can see the cattle guards right there leading south on Fox Ranch Road. As we'd mentioned a few times, this is a very large space. It is 12 acres of a general zone parcel. It's approximately 575 feet wide by roughly 1,200 feet deep. And so because of that, it has sufficient spacing. And as I'd mentioned before, and Zach had mentioned earlier, we are allowed to have 25 horse by right for personal use. Our request here, we believe, is reasonable. Our goal here is to keep the onsite improvements that are already existing and try to integrate this respectfully, of course, with the neighborhood under the guidance of the Planning and Zoning Commission here. So as I've mentioned, there, there are, there are existing buildings on the property. There is a single-family residential use on it. There is a large open riding area. There is roughly four acres of pasture to the direct south for grazing and to, to keep the rural character intact. We have circular, circular riding pen. All of our stables are mobile. So I understand that Zach would like for us to, to adhere to that 55-foot spacing requirement. We can easily do so as the, the stables itself are flexible in placement, and we can make sure we're placing them in a place that adheres to the ordinance and does not upset the neighbors. And as I'd mentioned as well, we are allowed by right 25 horses for personal use. And the request for 10 horse, or for 12 horses itself, we believe is well below which could occur. This is the site itself, and I colored it to make sure it's easy to understand. You have these existing single-family home in the green. You have the parking area in the orange itself. The stable, the mobile stables are yellow. The riding ring is pink, and the large arena is white. We also have the water well. If you look at the, the white circle in the top left portion of this, again, we are going to be drilling our own well or doing hauled water in, at, you know, to respect our neighbors, make sure we don't use too much water. We are going to put onsite roughly 4,500 gallons of water. And to answer Commissioner Wilson's question, water gets filled infrequently. This will not be a consistent trip of things like manure that doesn't happen every day. Filling water also does not happen every day, and we'll be mindful of the neighbors and the time in any increase in traffic. And as I'd mentioned, our proposed use here is to board up to 12 horses. Ryan Castellani and his wife, Christie, are introducing themselves into this sort of care. It is going to be a very, very small family business. Our goal is not to have 12 horses all year round, super busy. They'd like to mitigate the amount of horses on site with also allowing a maximum number of 12, which we believe is reasonable in relation to the idea that we are allowed 25 by right. So this is, again, a mom and pop's style of business here. We're not trying to ask for too much. We would like to keep numbers reasonable and minimal. All of our deliveries, anytime my clients will be taking in horses, it will be done through a reservation system to ensure we only have one to two deliveries onsite per day. Our goal is not to inundate my clients with people. This is not to really commercialize the site, but instead to make sure that we create a reasonable operation. Speaking of operations, Zach had already mentioned that our hours of operations will be between roughly 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. We do not anticipate heavy truck traffic in this area. And the staffing itself, we will have one person that will be coming in and out to help, you know, with any sort of issues that come up. And this is a trusted friend of the family as well. This is the current site plan as it's proposed. Zach already showed it to you. And I did mention, if you look right there at the bottom, there are 10 movable spaces to be kept 55 feet from the property line, so we're willing to move those to make sure we adhere with the ordinance. I'd like to discuss the general zoning designation briefly. The point of this is for light agricultural pursuits with very low-density residential uses. This fits in part and parcel with exactly what we're asking, preserves the rural environment, provides space, and minimizes congestion, which is exactly what we're hoping to do. The property already has very large acreage of expansive open pasture which faces the I-17, existing equestrian facilities. There will be no additional building that needs to happen on the site, and it directly aligns with the ranchette-style model that the general district proposes and, and requests. So the surrounding land uses are general in nature. Of course, we have the Coconino National Forest to the northeast here. There are some residential uses to the northwest here. I believe all, all of those, if not almost all of those, are owned by Mr. Mooney, who has come out in opposition of this. So most of those are just to the north. And something that, that we need to discuss here, and I'd like the, the commission to focus on, are the conditional use permit criteria. And of course, I'm sure you know these criteria in your sleep. I'd like to go through each one of these briefly and ensure the commission exactly how we adhere to each one of these. The first criteria is that it is in accord with the objectives of the ordinance and the purpose of the zone. This is zone general, as I've mentioned several times. It expressly accommodates the rural lifestyle, ag-style uses and equestrian uses. This is done through a CUP. We believe this preserves the open space and the properties currently active equestrian use and its adjacency to the national forest makes sense here. The second criteria is it will not be detrimental to the public health, welfare, or materially injurious or to properties nearby. As we'd mentioned, we are allowed 25 horses by right. My client could have 25 personal horses by right, use the parking area as they see fit to house all those horses. Instead, we are trying to do something that fits in with the neighborhood. We're not trying to disturb people here. We've cut that number in half to make sure that we have low vehicle trips. Our trailers will be used for drop-off pickup only to ensure minimal impact on Fox Ranch Road. On top of that, we are going to be proposing our own water well or hauled water. We don't want to upset any neighbors. We don't want to use too much water. And on top of that, as we've mentioned, manure will be collected weekly or managed per the ordinance standards. I know we are requesting 12 horses. It does not mean we're always going to have 12 horses on site. As I've mentioned, Castellani family will be doing this on their own with minimal assistance, so they do not want to be super busy. They want to make sure that they're respecting their own time with their children while also chasing a passion of both of theirs. Something that I'd mentioned earlier is the large spacing in this area. Again, Zach had mentioned that the RR two and a half zoning is over 1,000 feet away from the property. This is three football fields away from the parcel itself. Again, to the southwest, which I believe is owned by Lynn Fox, who we have a text message from saying she's not opposed to this. It's approximately 450 feet from our riding arena itself, further buffered by roughly four acres of open space. To the northeast, you have two and a half acres of mature ponderosa pines, which will act as a screen to the neighbor to the east and northeast. And there's roughly 400 feet between our circular riding pen and the neighbor itself. Importantly, these green stars denote how many vacant parcels are nearby. We understand that, that Mr. Mooney, who owns most of the properties in the area, has come out in opposition, has requested many of his neighbors to oppose this as well. We would like to know that many of these parcels are vacant, generally zoned parcels. The third criteria of the use permit was, is that it will comply with each of the applicable provisions. As Zach had mentioned, under section 3.3 for animal keeping, our stables will be put 55 feet or more away from property lines. Everything will be 150 feet away from water sources. Manure composting will be removed from the site weekly and kept more than 500 feet from the water source, which Zach's graph showed quite well. Any manure spreading will happen away from a water source over 500 feet. There are no variances requested here. As I've mentioned, the water source, the water well which is existing is roughly 200 feet away from our arena itself, not manure, nothing like that. But it is 200 feet away showing the, the spacing of this area, the large footprint of this, of this parcel itself. And the final criteria is that it fits in with the general plan. We believe this fits in in several different ways. First and foremost, it preserves the rural character and open landscapes. And from the general plan itself, I quote, "To ensure the conservation of open space for the environmental, social, and economic well-being of the county." We believe a mom and pop business like this that will be small in nature, minimizing impact and understanding that we don't want to upset the neighbors, but we want the ability to use this as the ranchland-style use, which is also codified in the general plan on page 68. Our goal is to keep this rural character and make sure that, that we adhere to what everyone wants in the area. The final one is to design with character, preserve with care. This are, the goal here is to enhance quality of your life while promoting economic vitality. A small footprinted boarding such as 12 horses owned by a mom and pop would, A, probably has a very strong need in this area, and B, will be minimal, especially in relation to the landscape, the space, and the size. This is also consistent with the envisioned 2045 principles, which have not been formally adopted yet, so I will skip that. We have neighbor concerns. We understand that many of the neighbors were concerned with the issues with potentially misinformation that we'd love to prevent and sort of clarify for the commission itself. First and foremost, we have voluntarily scaled this back from 16 horses to 12 horses. And again, I remind Madam Chair and the commission that we are allowed 25 horses on site by right. Our hours of operations will be strict limits of nine to five, no evening nighttime issues, activities, and that the goal here is to ensure quiet enjoyment for neighbors for things like deliveries and things like that. Our water supply will be private. Fox Road, we received some correspondence from the attorney who is also on this call regarding flooding of Fox Road. My clients, like any other mom and pop business, if the road floods, they'll suspend business. That is what any mom and pop store would do if there is adverse weather. If there's a snowstorm, if there's flooding, we won't have business because it wouldn't be safe for my clients or their customers or their horses. On top of that, we are taking screening measures. We are agreeing to plant 10, 10 gamble oak trees along the western property line to enhance privacy and visual screening. They'll be placed roughly right here on the site plan to the west to make sure that we can mitigate any sort of impact. Again, Madam Chair, Honorable Commission, I would like to point out that it is a very, very large area around here with, with spacing of over 500 feet to other neighbors, 1,000 feet to rural residential two and a half zoning. On top of that, there was comments about the conservation easement. There is no, no new road construction proposed for this. The existing access route is already in use and will remain unchanged. Again, my clients don't want 50 people coming in and out all day. They're going to be running this themselves with minimal assistance. They don't want substantial new traffic. Our goal to maintain my client's way of life, to maintain my client's peace of mind and allow them to spend time with their children, is to minimize traffic. This is not going to be a, a large money producer. It is more of a passion project for the two of them. We have neighbor support. There were some We have neighbor support. There were some, some concerns that Ms. Fox, who lives directly to the west, was not notified about this. My client originally scheduled the, the neighborhood meeting for mid-May, or I apologize, early May of this year, over three months ago. In the notice itself, my client stated, "If you cannot attend, please write me a text or a letter." All the people that were notified did send some sort of correspondence that checked everyone off the list who had an opportunity to respond. We believe we've had good faith outreach. Mr. Mooney, who is here tonight with his legal counsel, I believe I've had roughly 15 emails between the two of us. We've had substantial conversations on the phone to discuss his, his issues, his concerns. And on top of that, we had concerns about the USFS access to which we've dealt with that issue, and there is no issue at all. This is a text from Lynn Fox, the woman who allegedly was not informed of anything. And I will let you read that, basically saying that Luanne Mooney asked me to oppose this commercial endeavor. There was a conversation with my client, and as you can see, highlighted in pink, she said, "I would prefer to stay neutral and out of any disputes." She has an opportunity to be here tonight. She has an opportunity to oppose this. We've heard nothing negative from Ms. Fox. This is the email from Joseph Matman. He's the lands program manager for the National Forest. As you can see, highlighted, they, they view it as an open road. And there is no need to obtain any authorization. And the final statement here, feel free to save this correspondence as evidence that an authorization for the use of the road is currently not required from the Forest Service. So to conclude, CUP 25022 preserves the rural character of Fox Ranch Road while allowing a modest and well managed equestrian boarding use. We believe it complies with all zoning. It meets the CUP criteria. We do understand we will have questions, comments, concerns from the neighbors as well as the commission. On behalf of Christie and Ryan Castellani, we respectfully request approval of this conditional use permit with all recommended stipulations from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask public to please put your hand down. We are not at public comment portion yet. All right. Does any of the commission have any questions for the applicant? Okay, Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have a question regarding the trailers and storage on or off site. There's a number of horse owners on this commission, I'm one of them. And where my horse is, is where my trailer is. Because if I need to take my horse somewhere for emergency first aid, you know, whatever, I want to have my trailer onsite. Why would you not want to have those trailers with their horses?
Vice Chair Wilson, thank you for the question. My client, Ryan and Christie, they will have their own trailers. We are trying to adhere to what the neighbors have said, to not have overnight parking of third party trailers. If there's an emergency, we will allow people to have their trailers come in. My clients will also have their own trailers onsite. I'm not sure how many they own. On top of that, we will have the screening for the trailers there to help mitigate any impact. Based on our conversation with Zach, I believe we are allowed up to two or three trailers on the site, and I'll let Zach corroborate that. That being said, our goal is to minimize the impact of trailers itself.
And a second question, then, you, you're talking about 12 horses that would be boarded or up to 12. How many personally owned horses would you expect to see onsite?
I believe my client has two horses, Vice Chair. They own two, and with that, they have their own trailers. But I, I believe the number would be two, Vice Chair.
Okay, still well under 25. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Williams? You're muted, Mary.
I did put my hand down though. I remembered to do that. I'm also wanted to sort of follow up on the trailer thing. Wondering if it was, you know, not having borders, trailers there was to sort of appease the neighbors or if it was a desire of the applicant because I'm also a horse owner. My trailer, I would want it where my horse is. Cause my tack is in my, stored in my trailer. Everything is in my trailer. I would drive out, tack on my horse, go ride. The trailer stays there. If there's a fire, I can evacuate the horse. And I would also guess that, that if they're not going to have, you know, they're probably going to have borders that have more than one horse. So that's going to, but they're only going to have one trailer. So it's not like, you know, you're going to have one trailer per horse. That's very unlikely. But I would say if, if they want to have the borders, leave their trailers parked there. Because if you want to go out and, and go take your horse somewhere else to meet someone and ride in another location, you know, ride, you know, out of NARS or ri- anywhere, want a trailer somewhere and ride, it's just not really, it doesn't make sense. So if the reason they, they're saying that they're not going to have trailer parking is to appease the neighbors, I would say, don't worry about that. Because it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Thank you for the comments, Commissioner Williams. We are willing to stipulate. Our, our goal here, Commissioner Williams, Madam Chair, Honorable Commission, was not to upset the neighbors. We received some substantial pushback regarding that. That being said, I don't own any horses myself, so I don't know the real experience. If the commission and our, or Madam Chair is willing to cap that number of overnight trailers to, let's say, eight, we would be appreciative of that, and we think it would be realistic. Listening to what Commissioner Williams and Vice Chair Wilson had just said regarding emergencies, keeping your, keeping your trailer onsite, and also we'll be adding gamble oak trees on the west side of the property to make sure that there is screening. So if Madam Chair and the commission is willing to allow us to stipulate to that, we would appreciate that.
All right, Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Greenman. I appreciate the discussion that we've had. As a horse owner, I have, I have one horse, but I have two trailers. But I, I think that I agree with Commissioner Williams that for fire emergency evacuation, I am always in the ready position this time of year at least. And I think that your setbacks are tremendous. 1,000 feet. I don't even think I could see somebody's trailer from 1,000 feet away. So I think you should not worry about that. I'm more concerned about the safety and security of the, the business of caring for other people's horses, which I, I'm going to assume is only going to be part of the year anyway because of our winters. But again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for the comments, Commissioner Walsh. We agree, we agree. I, our goal was to ask for de minimis, but it's, it sounds like Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Honorable Commission, you're comfortable with increasing that number to the amount of horses onsite for emergencies, for issues like that. So thank you so much, Commissioner Walsh, for the comments, and we will defer to the commission for that decision.
Hey, Commissioner Berger.
So I'm, I'm just curious. I'm, I'm in agreement. I've had horses before, so I, I don't think we're even close to questioning the amount of trailers within reason. In looking at the website, do you have a feel as to how that's looking? It looks like it's live and online. So how is the business going? Are they looking at, you know, what the statistics are showing on that now? Do they have current borders on the property? Jordan?
Commissioner Berger, the only person on the property right now is a friend who's keeping an eye on the two horses that the Castellani's own. Truth be told, I'm not sure what's up right now when it comes to the internet. My goal here is land use and zoning to adhere to the, the criteria of Coconino County. I have no idea if anything's operating. I, well, I, let me pull that back. Nothing is operating here in relation to a commercial operation, anything like that. If there are, I believe there are one or two horses onsite. They, one of which I'm certain is my client's horse because he sent a photo of it. He sent a photo of it to me recently. If there's another horse there, it is one other person's, it's likely a friend or a family friend, but it is not an under operation right now, Commissioner Berger.
Thank you, Jordan.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things, gamble oak, you might want to give some consideration to that for screening. That is a deciduous tree and they don't leaf out until pretty late. End of May sometimes. You might want to look at evergreens. Pinion, juniper, ponderosa. I'll also be asking for a condition on the, on the manure issue. Like to make sure that manure is held back from property lines. Probably 50 feet and it looked like, you know, I don't have the photo in front of me, but it looks like you could store some trailers on the property out of the line of sight of most neighbors. And that would probably go a long way toward taking care of that issue. And I think that's all my questions. I guess I need to get a horse to be part of the commission here. So I'll be looking into that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for the comment, Commissioner Best. And the, the poignant response about the oak versus the evergreen or juniper. We're happy to do whatever the commission recommends, especially if, if we're looking for something that shades more and screens more. Again, this, you can see the overhead right here, which I put back on the screen. I believe you should be able to see it. To the immediate west is Lynn Fox, who does not have any issue with this. Our goal is to line Fox Ranch Road to make sure that it doesn't, we don't have any issues. That being said, we're open to evergreen, juniper, ponderosa, which matches sort of the, the neighbor, the neighboring trees itself. So we're open for that. Thank you, Commissioner Best.
I would say just get someone to help you with that because in, in our environment, it's difficult to propagate trees, especially without running irrigation lines. And I don't know if you want to do that. So get some help on, on propagating those.
Absolutely. Thank you for the expertise, Commissioner Best.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Just a quick comment. Mr. Greenman, the website does say trailer storage is one of the features that's offered by RC Stables. So glad to see we're going to be doing that.
Lovely. I, I will have to see the website myself. I apologize for the misinformation. I, I've never looked at the site. So I do apologize if I misstated something there. It was not by, it wasn't by ill intent. I assure you, Vice Commissioner.
All right. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised.
Hi, this is Commissioner Toby.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't have my hand up, but I figured everybody was done. But Commissioner Best keeps putting his hand up, so I wasn't sure. And so I, I just have a comment. I don't have a question. But I just want to state appreciation to the, to the presentation. I think it answered a lot more of some of the thoughts that I was having. But I also think that just the fact that I really like the, the idea of the family getting into just teaching the next generation good things about the animal relatives. I think that is a part of something that, that's part of something that is not always promoted. It, it's always more about what others will think. But I think that it's important that our animal relatives have a place to thrive and a place to call home as well. So I really appreciate the, the conversation here. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Commissioner. I think that was well put and poignant, and we appreciate that as well.
Okay, if no other commissioners have any questions for the applicant, then I will open it up to public comment. And you can raise your hand or unmute. I will call on you. And you will, when I call on you, please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to make your comments. All right. The first one on the list is Whitney Cunningham. Please state your name and address and proceed with your three minutes comments.
Madam Chair, thank you, commissioners. My name is Whitney Cunningham. I'm with the law firm of Aspie Watkins &amp; Diesel, 123 North San Francisco Street in Flagstaff. I represent five of the six closest property owners to the subject parcel. And I'd like to begin by making clear the opposition is not to horses, nor is it to animal husbandry. As we're all aware, and you've heard several times tonight, a private property owner with their own animals can keep those animals and raise them, teach their children and provide safe spaces. The issue with this property is that the Castellani's, who are not property owners, but they are tenants of the property owner, are seeking to commercialize an area that was never intended to be commercialized and does not have the infrastructure to support the commercial activity that they've been engaging in already for a period of several months. Their website went up in the spring, well before there was a permit in this case. And that's going to be relevant because it speaks to the fragility of the infrastructure that we're talking about. But I believe that the commission will be unable to make finding number two as it concerns injurious activity to neighboring properties, as well as finding number three, that this application has proceeded in accordance with the county zoning code. And those are the issues I want to address very briefly. You heard Zach Schwartz tell you that there was no community meeting. There was no neighborhood meeting held in this case. And that is in fact true. There has been no community meeting. You heard the applicant's attorney affirm the same thing. And I would point out, there, there, there is no exception for what we mostly talk to our neighbors about it. There, there is an exception in the code and only one. And that exception is that the, that the director of planning and zoning make a finding to waive the community meeting, that that finding be placed in writing and in the record. It is not. There is no finding in the record. In fact, the record, the staff report incorrectly states that a community meeting took place on May 10. It did not. And one of the documents that we attached to our letter is the applicant's email canceling that meeting. That is a fatal flaw in the commission's ability to go forward in approving the application tonight. There is no meeting that is not appointing contention. There is no finding by the director waiving that meeting. Full stop. That's the end of the discussion. Now, as it concerns finding number two, bear in mind, and you've heard this, there is a federal conservation easement crossing part of this property. By that easement, no solid asphalt is allowed, only permeable asphalt. These roads are fragile and since the applicant has begun advertising this business, they've had to place metal plates on the bridge to get across the water crossing to the property. This area was never intended for this acute commercial use. And Commissioner Williams, you are correct. CUP-12-049 in 2012 was when this commission denied the commercialization of this property. And while this particular use may not be as overarching as the church camp, it is intensely acutely injurious in this particular location and therefore inappropriate. And that's why we oppose the project.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next person in the public, Shirley Smith. Please state name, address, and you have three minutes. You are muted. Shirley, are you able to unmute? Shirley Smith, are you able to?
Okay, we got it.
Okay, there we go.
Sorry, apologize.
Sorry, apologize. So I owned Fox Ranch Parcel 1. And I boarded horses there, knowing that I had to have a permit for about five years. I've had a lot of conversations with Ryans. But I don't think I ever had more than four or five trailers back there. I had up to 16 horses at one time. None of the neighbors had a problem. I didn't have a lot of traffic. Out of those borders, I would say most of them brought their horses to get them up out of the heat and were very seldom there. It was, it all was up to me to take care of them. There were a few that would come and go, but the majority of traffic coming through there is very, very, very little. Like I said, I had up to 16 horses. Four of them were my own. And again, I did not realize that I couldn't board until Don Walters told me one day, hey, make sure you get this done and get it done right. And so I had planned on that. And then the following year, I only boarded a couple, which was within my limit not to move forward. And the year after that, at 67 years old, I felt like it was time for me to bow out. So as far as the road goes and the road conditions, I've seen the pictures. And they looked the same to me as they did when I lived there. We've had to keep maintenance done on that road. As, as you know, the weather washes a lot away and you just have to keep up with it. There's parcel two, which is next door to parcel one, of course. A lot of traffic comes from that parcel. Lacey runs a landscaping business out of there and has been for years. So you've got trailers coming in and out on a regular basis with equipment and material. I know she's building now, so a little easier for her to hide it. There are trailers on there as well, which have come in and out. Parcel three is never around much. She also has horses and will want to bring her horses when she finally builds. Parcel four, I believe he's, think he's going to be building in the future. But he also isn't there. Parcel five comes and goes. Mooneys haven't been there much for a couple of years now, in and out. He does run cattle. We've always been respectful to keep that gate closed. When the cattle are there, you go through a gate open, you leave it open, you go through it closed, you close it. We all know that. Trying to think what I'm missing here that I should be bringing up. Just don't think of anything else. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer anything.
If you have no further comments, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. Next person on the list is David Duncan. Name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Duncan. I live at 22197 Fox Ranch Road. I am a permanent resident of Fox Ranch. And so I see this probably more than anybody. Shirley's comment of Lacey coming in and out. You know, I watched that road. You know, I'm retired, so I'm home all the time. I've, I've only seen Lacey haul equipment down the road one time. But to get at this, since I've lived out there for two years, the road is a constant worry of mine. I purchased a Western plow and a diesel truck to remove the snow from the road. Or the deterioration of the road would be almost immediate. There's large cracks, and when the snow melts, it gets under the cracking in the asphalt. What's left is completely deteriorating the road. At my own cost, I, at my own cost, I patched the holes with concrete. It's been mentioned that Mr. and Mrs. Castellanti are trying to, you know, better their, or show their children a better way. Well, from my understanding, they bought the property and they had a hired ranch hand who was going to live in the house and run the property. So I, it was my understanding that they weren't even going to be on site. As far as, to couple, to couple that up with the road, this, this bridge that isn't even a bridge, when the runoff or the water flows through that area and it floods, it's for not days, but weeks at a time is that bridge and road flooded. Which if the, if the road or if the soil and the surrounding soils are soft and muddy, it's just going to trash what's left of the bridge and nobody's going to be able to get in. As far as them drilling a well, I have a private well there. It's 1,800 feet deep at a cost of $300,000 to $400,000. They mentioned they're not doing this for, you know, to get rich or to make money. But that, I would think indicates that hauling water is going to continue. I drive by there a few times a week. There's a pile of manure that's 10 foot tall. Just the whole thing is poorly, just a poor, I don't, it's just, it's, I, I don't know what they're, they're trying to do and what they're, it's just frustrating. And, and my biggest concern is the road. What little bit we left have, or have left of the road is it. There was an elk that was hit on that front of the road. The elk sat there for 10 months. ADOT would not respond because they don't manage the road. State truck would not. Nobody, they're, the elk rotted in the middle of the road. We are the only ones responsible for what's left of this road. And I feel that trailers, you know, in, in the line of sight of the trailer, the lot, the lot is flat. So there is no hiding the trailers. It's going to look like a junk lot from I-17.
Mr. Duncan, your, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Okay, next one. Next person on the list is John Owen. If you want to go ahead and state name and address, and you'll have three minutes. And you are muted. Mr. Owen, are you able to unmute? Mr. McNally, are we able to unmute for him?
Chair Burton, no. The, yeah, we can mute.
But we can't unmute.
Yeah, we can unmute.
Okay. Mr. Owen, if you want to communicate with us in the chat, that would be okay, since it seems like you're having. Hey, there we go. Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I'm, I'm from Scottsdale, but I'm building right now. I'm on Lot 4. So we've got a septic tank going in, septic system, and we're built, we're in the process of building. But I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts. I bought Don Walters' lot from his widow, Marcy Walters. And I asked very specific questions. We, we, we didn't want, we wanted to be in a rural area. And we didn't want, we wanted a very quiet, quiet place to, to, to live. And that's where we plan, you know, on living full time when we get, when we get done. But my main question is, and by the way, I'm a horse lover. My wife and I had horses for 30 years and I still have a ranch in California. But we really, and we don't have them now. When council said that they're going to use minimal water and, and they're going to truck in water. And, and if you got a boarding facility, you're going to use a lot of water. You're not going to use a little water. You're going to use troughs. You got to fill the troughs and you're going to also want to, if you ride, you're going to want to also, you know, wet your horses down and cool them off. So there's going to be a lot of water use and, and I just know. And, and if you got a boarding facility, you're going to use a lot of water. You're not going to use a little water. You're going to use troughs. You got to fill the troughs and you're going to also want to, if you ride, you're going to want to also, you know, wet your horses down and cool them off. So there's going to be a lot of water use and, and I just know that this well was designed for the property owners of our development. I specifically asked Marcy, you know, is there any commercial use? Is there going to be any commercial use? And if we wanted a lot of people coming in, guys, we would have gone across the street to, to the big development across the street on Fox Ranch Road. But look, commercial property is designed for commercial property. What, it's the same thing if I said, well, guys, how about if I want a conditional use permit? And how about if I just put a feed store on Lot 4 to help, you know, the, the boarding facility? I know I'd have opposition to it because it's not, you know, zoned for commercial use. Personal use, no problem. They can put as many horses as they want or what, what the county's going to allow. But I feel that it, because of the neighbors and what their feelings are about, you know, having the public come in and crossing the, number one, the conservation easement is a concern. It states very clearly, at least on the conservation easement, certain restrictions that has to be, you know, abide by. And, you know, they're, they're very specific. You know, it's not something that you can ignore because all of our property is on that conservation yet. So we have to look at it and we have to, you know, abide by it. And it's, there's some really big ones. And some of the big ones is industrial and commercial activities. And it's a spirit of how this was drafted. Except for permitted agriculture uses, which you already have the code for, and granting of any right of passage for any purpose are prohibited. We can't ignore the conservation easement because that's really the spirit of how it was drafted. Other, you know, restrictions is no paddock, barn, stable fence, pasture, enclosures for animals shall be with, shall be, shall be built with, prohibit any animals for access to drinking of any creek, drainage, way or water body. That's a big one. That's not just, that's, that's standing out like a sore thumb. It means that that's not the spirit of how this conservation easement was drafted and what the spirit of, of really what it was intended for.
Mr. Owen, your, your three minutes is up. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I have a Jay Klinger. If you want to unmute. Any other participants, please re-mute and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jay Klinger. I reside at 10595 Los Coles Lane in Yuma, Arizona. I probably, besides Lacey, have been at this property and around this property more than others. Shirley's no longer there. She doesn't know what's going on anymore there. Lacey and myself probably spend the most time here. I've owned the property long enough to become friends with Don Walters. Don Walters was an amazing human being. His, his vision for this property, as he told me multiple times, was to build beautiful family homes and, and hopefully to have five neighbors in a neighborhood that, that could all come down for, for wine at night. That's exactly what he said to me. But let me get to the guts of it. The well is a shared well. It's the only water that the, the five lots have that they're using right now for watering the horses. Shirley used it against, against the law. She told you that. And it's prohibited in the shared well agreement. The well produces four GPM, four. The new owners are not going to spend $300,000 to $400,000 to drill a well next to the well that produces four gallons a minute to service five lots. It's not going to happen. They're going to have to haul water. The bridge, I'm, I am the one that put the plates on the bridge. I'm getting ready to remove the plates off the bridge because they're on my dime. I'm paying for them. The bridge is done. The next semi truck that rolls over the bridge, whether it be a hay truck or whether it be a recycled truck for the manure or a horse trailer is going to fall through the bridge once I remove my plates. That's, that's, that's where we're at with the road. Okay? Ask yourselves this. If you guys have horse boarders, which I own horses and I own livestock, I know exactly what this takes to do. It's hard. What they're going to do is really, really hard. Where, where are these people going to use the restroom? They had, they had, they had portable toilets out there for a while that I had to drive by every day. And guess what service is that? A semi truck. Again, going through the bridge. Let me just address real quick the water situation that you guys are talking about with the manure. On my Lot 5, I have a spring and it runs every time we have high water. It ran, it ran three years ago.
Hey, sir, your, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other public who has not already spoken that would like to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Kurt Gillan.
Yes, if you would like to state your address, then you'll have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I live at 128 East Ridgecrest Avenue. I've, I've been boarding horses at Shirley's for five or six years now. And nothing is ever, I, I can't believe what's going on right now. It's, you know, no one's ever said anything about it before. And now it's just, now it's a big deal for some reason. And to get back to the bridge, I, I feed now, I feed for Ryan in the morning and in the evenings. And I see dump trucks come through the, over that bridge. I see, I've seen a giant excavator come through that bridge. A crane truck the other day go over that bridge and I didn't see any of them stop at Ryan's house. And as far as that goes, you know, that, that bridge is, I don't know who, you know, okayed that, but it should have never been, you know, okayed. But anyways, but, I mean, like I said, I've been boarding my horses there for five or six years and nobody's ever said a word about, you know, the horses there. And, you know, last year, a rancher, Flint, leased the house. He had over 30 horses there last year because I had my horses there and I know that he had 30 horses. Nobody ever said a word. So I, I don't know what everybody's getting upset about. It's, it's pretty ridiculous and it's embarrassing. That's, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. All right. Is there anybody else in the public who has not already addressed the commission on this case that would like to? Okay, I'm not seeing any. It looks like Shirley and John, you need, your hands are still raised. If you want to go ahead and lower those. Okay, so. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion and open it up to commission discussion. Let's start with Commissioner Hayward.
Madam Chair, before we start, could I ask one quick question?
Sure.
One of the commentators mentioned that because of the lack of a public media. Um, one of the commentators mentioned that because of the lack of a public meeting that that could be a legal issue here and I would like to check with our legal counsel to find out if that's the case because if it is, any further discussion we have would be of little value.
And, and we could also ask for clarification because it was my understanding that nobody showed or people said they weren't going to. So.
I can clarify that if I'm able to, Madam Chair.
Um, okay, go, uh, go ahead and clarify that. And then I'd like to hear from our legal counsel, Angela Lane.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you for the question, Vice Chair. My client sent out a letter of notice which was approved by Coconino County. And it said very, very flatly, if you are unable to attend the meeting, please email me. And everyone that we mailed the letter to reached out and said they were unable to attend the meeting. And therefore, because everyone was unable to attend the meeting, the meeting was effectively canceled. There had been concerns about the neighbor to the west, Lynn Fox, not receiving notice. We have a text message from her saying she's unopposed. My client, Ryan Castellani, also went to her house to discuss it around the same date.
Okay, that was, that's consistent with what I thought. But my question would be to our legal counsel, have we missed a checkbox that was necessary to get to this point?
Yes, and this is Angela Lane from the county attorney's office. I did, as soon as I heard that comment, I did go back and check our ordinance and that is a requirement. I do think though, if, I, I just wanna mention right now, like, if the, if the commission would like to go into executive, executive session to discuss this issue, we are able to do that if that's, if you would feel more comfortable with that. We would need a motion to do that. If not, I can give you a generalized kind of, I think, list of options right now.
Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, I've been waving my hand the entire time and I've sat through this entire meeting and nobody's called on me. I unclicked my, finally unclicked my button to try to get through, but I've sat through this entire meeting. I submitted a letter. I do have concerns about this and I am an owner of property in this area. Uh, my name's Paul Mooney. Uh, my name's been mentioned several, several times.
Excuse me just a second. This is counsel. I think if we did miss someone, maybe we should go back and reopen the public hearing. So he can be heard and then we can go back to discussion. I think that would probably procedurally be appropriate right now.
Okay, yes, I'm okay with that. We can reopen the public comment. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Mooney. Um, and state your address and proceed with the, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, one of our two homes is at 22205 Fox Ranch Road. Um, we've lived there for thirteen years. Purchased the property from Don Walters and Rick Harbor at that time. And so I have some familiarity with this property. I wanted to say a couple of things really quick. Number one, the map that your staff is working from is completely inaccurate. It's been changed fundamentally since the map that they're using. Um, and Mr. Mr. Cunningham can confirm that. He was party to the litigation with the federal government that resulted in redrawing the conservation easement boundaries, redrawing the maps for the two and a half acre parcels at the top of the property. Somebody alluded to those parcels and why they're there. They're there because of the conservation easement. It was a quid pro quo that was worked out by the then owner of the property there, Mary Kay Myers, who basically donated a fifty acre conservation easement to the federal government in exchange for the Planning and Zoning Commission rezoning those parcels on the north to two and a half acres. Those parcels are not in the general zone. They are two and a half acre parcels. There are a total of seven of them. And those are all improved and ready to be developed for residential properties. So that goes to the question that was raised earlier. As for the church camp issue, Whitney's covered that, that zoning application was denied and we purchased the property right after that zoning application was, was refused. And we've been there since. We've been running cattle on the property with a, with a land, with a cattle rancher down from Yabba Pike County named Andy Grossetta, who passed away a few weeks ago. Uh, Andy's been running cattle up there every year, ever since. Um, and so I have probably the greatest familiarity with that property of anybody. Been there longer than Shirley Smith. Been there longer than any of the other people who have spoken. Any, everybody but Lynn Fox. She's the only person that's been there longer than us. And Lynn Fox is a recluse. She's an elderly woman. She's in her eighties. She doesn't speak to people. She doesn't have email. And she sent a text to my wife, which I quoted in a letter to you. I didn't misrepresent the quote. Uh, simply put, she said she's not in favor of this. So that contradicts something else you were told. The real problem here, and Whitney alluded to it, the real problem here is that, yes, you're right, you have an absolute right to have twenty-five of your own horses on your own property. But you don't have a right to conduct a business on your property. Mr. Castellani wants to grow, wants to board other people's horses. That is not permitted under the existing zoning law. That's why a conditional use permit is being requested here. And we keep saying like, this is an absolute right. It is only an absolute right if they're your horses. It's not an absolute right when they're other people's horses. I've alluded to a number of things in the letter that I submitted and every single one of those things can be corroborated and backed up. The simple fact is, we have a problem with the volume and weight of traffic that is going to be coming down there. There have been horses on this site since April. There's a video online of the RC Stables website that shows eight horses on this property. And maybe Mr. Greenman has never looked at the website, but he ought to because they've been running horses down there and grazing horses down there continuously since Mr. Castellani signed a lease with Ms. Smith and an option to purchase her property. And that's what he has, is a lease with an option to purchase. And candidly, everything that's been said by the, the, the people who are parties to that transaction has to be examined for bias. And the last thing I wanna say is, you know, I'm a trial lawyer for a living. And I'm appalled at the things that pass as evidence in a proceeding like this. None of it's under oath. And none of it's verified. And there is simply no admissible evidence in this case that Mrs. Smith, or excuse me, Mrs. Fox has ever agreed to this. No neighborhood meeting was held.
Sure, your, your three minutes is up.
I understand. I understand. It's a lot to cover when the other side talks for thirty minutes, but in any event, that's, uh, read my letter. It says a lot.
Okay, um, so since we reopened it to public comment, I wanna double check one more time that there's no other, um, public who has not already addressed the commission that would like to do so.
There was, there was one other person who sent, sent an email. She was in for the first hour of this meeting. Her name is Tracy Schankman. Uh, she is the owner of lot number three and she asked that her statement be read. Uh, Whitney represents her. I, I, I'm happy to read it for her if the commission wants to hear it, but.
Hold, hold, hold on to that, please.
Okay.
Is this something that we already received in our packet?
No.
Okay. Does legal counsel have any opposition to us allowing him to read that?
Sorry, are you talking to me, legal counsel or any other legal counsel? Yes, um, okay, public comment is over. Um, well, I think, I, I think that since this person who wanted to speak has her legal representative here, I don't have an issue with that statement being read into the record. Um, she was here and this hearing has gone on for a long time. I understand that. Um.
Okay, okay, so, um, we, we will allow it as long as it is under three minutes.
I don't think it'll take me that long. If you want me to read it or Whitney can read it, either one.
Um, it, it doesn't matter to me. Somebody read it so that we can move on.
I've got it. Um, this is from Tracy Schankman. Um, again, uh, they are the owner of lot number three. Please read my comments. Here they are. I, as an owner of property nearby and within the distance specified for notice, would like to emphasize the private road mentioned, mentioned by Mr. Cunningham. Currently used by the stable means that liability for injury to drivers, passengers and horses on that private road would fall on the residents who try desperately but find it difficult to maintain the road for the reasons already mentioned by Mr. Cunningham. But for the five owners who use the road, having a public business on the road conveys extraordinary liability to the four, to the other four residential owners who maintain the road. The stables liability insurance won't cover the remainder of the landowners. That means the rest of us would have to find and purchase our own liability insurance due to the stables business. It is likely impossible for the owners to find such insurance. The maintenance of the road is currently a big issue among us. Effectively, the resident, residential lots get cut off for weeks at a time. That's a difficulty for us and we deal with it, but it is unfair to owners of horses that would be likewise cut off from access to their, their beloved animals. Likewise, the residential lots near the stable are already dealing with trespass into our properties. That conveys liabilities for us should a border get injured on one of our properties. And once again, the stable owner's insurance is unlikely to indemnify us. We could try to fence off all of our properties, but there are large portions that can't be fenced off due to the snow melt and storm water shed. In addition, fencing would preclude the grazing lease use that several owners currently provide for a local rancher. And it would transfer substantial additional cost onto us as owners as a result of the financial benefit for the stable owner. That's hardly fair. In summary, I am most concerned about the road liability and maintenance, including the water crossing, which is currently collapsing under the current use. That's what she said. It's Tracy Schankman sent that at seven o'clock this evening.
Okay. All right. So I think that now closes the public comment portion again, and we will not be reopening it. Okay, so I do want to ask, uh, my fellow commissioners if they want to go into executive session for, for questions with county legal.
Ms. Lane suggested she could give us some advice before that. Could we hear what she had to share?
Yeah, that is fine with me.
Yes, I am happy to, um, I guess, give my briefcase. Like, I do feel like I do have a concern about the, the issue with the public meeting. I don't think I have quite enough information right now to make a decision on, on that right now because this just came to me right now. I think my recommendation, I kind of have two recommendations for the planning commission. First and foremost, pursuant to the zoning ordinance for a conditional use permit, the planning commission doesn't have to decide today. You have forty days. So you are welcome to continue the hearing to next time within forty days where we can answer this question and maybe fix this issue if it really is an issue. Um, that would be one recommendation going forward. The other one is, is that you could proceed. And if you were to deny this application, that question would be moot. If you approve it, then, um, within fifteen days, anyone can appeal. Any person here in opposition could appeal on that ground and that would still give us time to look at that issue, uh, before it goes to the Board of Supervisors for a decision.
Vice Chair Wilson, does that give you enough information or would you like to get a little more granular and go into executive?
I, that gives me enough information because it tells me that any deliberation that we continue at this point is, is subject to being completely overturned anyway. I would like to know for sure that what we're doing is, is merited. Um, and that we've checked the blocks that were required to before we go through that effort.
Uh, Commissioner Berger.
Uh, I have, I, I think mine is based on just experience on some things. I used to write documents. I'm just, you know, I made, I, I asked a direct question, who the owner was, and now somebody's saying it's still Shirley. So I wanna just preface that I'm not comfortable without knowing what we're doing here uh, with the actual owner of the property versus this person that's put, that's putting the application in. Did I understand that right? Okay.
Commissioner Berger, I can answer that question. It's a lease purchase contract.
Yeah, but there's still, there's still, there's still some underlying stuff though, and I, I don't know what the lease contract looks like. I don't know what it does or doesn't say. It may not be our privy, but it's still a little bit uncomfortable, unclear.
Respectfully, Commissioner, I have, I have approval from both Shirley, who you heard earlier, and Ryan Castellani, as you have heard, is my client, to proceed with this. They collectively, the two of them have total control of the property.
It, uh, Chair Burton and Commissioners, this is Jess with staff. Um, we'd point out that, uh, it's, um, if the property owner has signed off on the application to proceed with a conditional use permit and authorized the applicants to proceed with a conditional use permit, that is perfectly legal. Um, so we don't see the ownership, the ownership as an issue. Um, if the commission wants to discuss, uh, you know, whatever they're comfortable with on meeting the zoning ordinance requirements for the neighborhood meeting. Uh, we see that the applicant, um, uh, did a mailing to the surrounding property owners. Um, they got a completely, complete response and no one could make the meeting. Um, so their, their, uh, method of meeting, uh, the meeting intent there, uh, the requirements of the zoning ordinance has said, okay, if you can't make the meeting, obviously, uh, you've heard many, um, applications before you where someone's held the meeting, no one shows up to the meeting. So we report out that no one showed up to the meeting. We, uh, staff would see this as the same way. No one could make the meeting. Um, so it's kind of a bit of a technicality here that the meeting, um, technically wasn't held to sit there and, um, and have no one show up to a meeting. Uh, don't see that the outcome's any different uh, since the applicant offered to receive a comment. However, um, if the, um, if the commission's not comfortable with that, certainly, um, uh, the, you know, we could, uh, continue the hearing and have, ask the applicant to go back. And again, if they offer to hold the public meeting, um, and hold the public meeting, if nobody can make it, then, then the outcome will pretty much be the same, that nobody comes to the meeting.
Okay, thanks, Jess.
Commissioner Best.
Well, a number of questions lead me to be thinking of a continuance. You can always have a virtual meeting, which we're having right now. The bridge, I think, needs to be analyzed because we've got an emergency response issues here and emergency evacuation issues. This is right on the edge of the forest. And what we're hearing that there's a bridge that might, I mean, we're hearing a lot about the bridge, both sides of whether or not it's functional or not. I'm seeing, uh, so the toilet issue is interesting. Uh, normally we think about that. I'm, I'm a little confused about access to the property. So I just have a number of questions that aren't being answered. I, and so I'd either like them to be answered or get a continuance, uh, so that we can dig a little deeper in the next month.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Burton, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is the first time a toilet is brought up and on top of that, we have written verification from the U.S. Forest Service that they don't have any issue with the access on the road. The road itself, as well as the culvert and the bridge are functional. We have no indication of any other direction here other than people saying that something is going to happen. We don't have any proof of that. We don't have any verification of that. People are building.
It works the other way. It, it, it works the other way. Normally, we require that someone attest that a forty-two thousand pound axle can arrive at a commercial property. Especially one on the edge of the forest where, um, either a fire could start at the property or the property could be threatened by an existing fire. Uh, it's not normal for us not to have data. Someone take a look at the ability of a road to sustain emergency response. The water is another issue. We're hearing, I, I don't know if that's something that P and Z has jurisdiction over, the shared well, uh, now being used by a commercial property. So that's a question. I just have a number of questions and, uh, we can go into, uh, I, I suppose we can have all the commissioners, uh, list their questions and keep going, or we might get to a point where we, where we say, well, some of these. where we say, well, some of these things need to be analyzed a little deeper than we can do at nine thirty tonight.
Commissioner Best, if I may, I'm happy to answer any of the questions irrespective of what a few of the neighbors have said. We're willing to haul water. Though the shared well is not anything we are relatively concerned about. On top of that, this is a private easement of existence here that is of relation of private matter. I understand the concerns, but on the same note, Commissioner, with all due respect, people are building their homes to the east here. Um, the building commission, as well as the county commission, is ensuring that these are safe for any sort of issue.
Madam Chair, if I if I could interrupt here, um, I think this is getting into a debate rather than.
Yes, we're we're getting out of order here. So I want to
I agree.
Cease all conversation at the moment. Anybody not a commissioner is no longer permitted to speak unless directly addressed by one of the commissioners. Um, I will ask that anybody who's not on the commission, go ahead and turn off your cameras and make sure you're muted. I want to eliminate those additional distractions. Okay, so Commissioner Best is not wrong as far as I can tell as for for commercial use, we do generally require that a road meets county standards for emergency access. So, Mr. McNeely, yes, please weigh in.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we do have certain uses in the zoning ordinance. I'm sure Commissioner Best is thinking of uh commercial campgrounds, RV parks, where we do have the requirement for forty for um the county standard being met that a road is is verified as um uh being capable of supporting a forty-two thousand pound vehicle. Um, this is a private easement. Um, at at whatever point in time this road got built, it was supposed to be permitted through the county to confirm it met that requirement. Um, this is a use as a as an equestrian use, doesn't have that requirement built into the code. Um, however, um if the commission's not comfortable with this um this use being uh if you see it above and beyond any other single-family residence that would be built in this neighborhood um as neat as having a higher need for emergency access, that that would be that would be the kicker of of putting that um putting that condition on this use. Uh, staff didn't see that. Staff saw this as this is a very rural area. Um, we did uh the from the applicant's submittals, we didn't see the traffic was significantly uh was any different significantly different than any typical um uh rural rural property in this in this area. So um that is not something we full well know. This is a private easement. Uh, all of us know how private easements get maintained. Actually, this one's fortunate in that it has a maintenance agreement. Uh, many of the ones we work with don't have maintenance agreements. So um if if the commission would want to add that condition, they could. Staff didn't see it necessary to add that condition, and it's certainly not a base condition out of the zoning ordinance. So that's that would be that would be staff's um uh analysis uh and certainly the zoning ordinance facts as would apply to that topic.
Okay, so I just want to make sure it is definitely getting late here. Um. I where my concern lies is whether or not the remainder of the road and said bridge is engineering engineered is is sound. I don't, we don't need horses, you know, horse trailers. You know, sinking through or having it collapse or something. So I don't know. Am I the only one that has an issue with this? But at the same time, if it's a private uh road agreement, then if all the neighbors are saying this needs to be done, so why are they not already addressing it? If they have a private road agreement, why have they not already had an engineer out there and evaluated it and repaired it? So it sounds like it's being pushed down the can. And no, I'm not taking any more public comments. So please put your hands down. Um, I guess I know I'm asking questions, but I'm just talking out loud at this point. So um, okay, I have numerous uh commissioners that seem to want to weigh in. And at this point, I would like to hear what you have to say, and I also want to hear what your opinions are on a continuance. So um Commissioner Best, your hand has been up continuously. Did you forget to put it down, or would you like to say something else? Okay.
Uh, yeah, I'll I'll just uh at at this point. I would either like to see that personally so that I could attest that I thought it was okay. If we're not going to uh worry about emergency response. Or I would like somebody to evaluate it. Uh, the road issue. Uh, I think the well water. So I I think I think we should just go through, as you said, and each of us uh.
Yeah, and I I don't.
You want to start with me, or you you want to go back to Commissioner Hayward and in the order that you.
Um, we'll go in the order that uh I usually do. I'll go off my list. But I also don't think we should be taking the water into consideration because that's really outside of our purview. So I would rather just completely take that off the table. So I I don't want to discuss anything that's not in our purview. Um, okay. Commissioner Hayward. And if you're not a commissioner, please put your hand down. We are no longer in public comment. All right, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, yeah, I think we we do see a lot of these um. The the these issues come up, right? There there's there's concerns the neighbors have and the that they're right to have them. Um, but um to put it bluntly, they're not our problem. Um. What? You know, I mean, I live in a in a part of the county. I live in a community. I have a a I like unfortunately, like Jess mentioned, I do not have a shared maintenance agreement with my neighbors. I have three neighbors. Um, when our road road starts to fall apart, I I'm probably just going to fixing it myself. Um. Uh, we have a shared well. Fortunately, it produces a lot more than four gallons per minute. Um, but you know, while those are valid concerns, um, those are things that those those folks over there need to figure out by themselves. Um, if you're if your bridge is collapsing, it's your responsibility to pay for and fix your bridge. Um, in um, I mean, I I would hope that you can find a way that it's someone else's problem and get them to pay for it. Um, but I don't think that's uh something that we're required to do um or something that um we can require uh this applicant to do um, you know, based on based on the use that that they're proposing and the conditional use permit that we're being asked us to review. So I think realistically, right, we can take, we we can, we can put aside a lot of what we've heard um and really just focus down and on, you know, is the use that's being proposed here consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan? Because I think that's the that's really the the meat of the question. Um, uh. The, you know, I I I'm inclined to say yes. Um, you know, I think um this is a rural area. Um, we're demonstrating it's a rural area by the fact that, you know, we're running cattle next door. Um, that's an agricultural use. Um, you know, boarding some some horses um is an agricultural use as well. Um, I uh this doesn't, this is a twelve horse operation. Um. Unlike many of the other commissioners, I only I rode the first a horse for the first time since I was twelve this summer. So I'm not an expert, but I did enjoy it. Um, the um it 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 is a small operation. Um, you know, will it have some impacts? Yes. Um, you know, will will those guys have to get together and fix their road? Yes. Um, but I think it would be a benefit to our county as a whole. Supports our um our comprehensive plan supports it. And it's late, so I'm gonna stop there. Thanks, guys.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Burger.
So looking at goals and policies, and I read through that again, um, our job is to read through those goals and policies and uphold those. Um, so I'm in agreement with David wholeheartedly that we're getting into some dicey, dicey areas um where we probably do not belong, if not not belong. Um, so I'm inclined to uh agree that uh we need to stay and focus on something that we can actually do without going outside our purview. I'm really nervous about that right now. Um. I don't, definitely not the water. And I'm 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 a, I mean, I used to have rural property. I don't kick the can down and go blame my my neighbors. So um, I think that we really got to stay focused now, and I it's really not up to us. Uh, I want to go back to the goals and policies. Um, and if we are sure and we check all those boxes, um, then I say we move on.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I can make the findings based on land use and growth. This is an old ranch. Having a couple of horses out there um fits. I can make the findings on community character and economic development. I am not interested in their water or their road. That is that a private problem. Um, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Um, yeah, I'm in agreement with what everybody before me has said. Um, certainly, the water is nothing that we can discuss. Uh. And the private road isn't our business. I live on a private road and you know, a few years back, it was determined that we needed to upgrade it to the tune of over a hundred thousand dollars between eight residents. And, you know, it hurt, but we have a nice paved road. You know, I mean, sometimes you just they're just gonna have to figure their own road out. So um and I can make the findings. So I think when we go back to just focusing on what our job is, um, it's not quite so confusing.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Best.
Well, I think the road is my main question. But I guess what I'm hearing from staff is that in this case, it's not our responsibility. Uh. And it concerns me somewhat because of the emergency response issue. Uh. But other than that, um I can generally make the findings. It's a small operation now. I I wish they hadn't started it before they got the permit, but uh it's not that uncommon either. So if we're taking the road off the table, then I can make the findings.
Okay, Vice Chair Wilson.
I'm going to go back to the root question I started with, which is if there wasn't a public meeting held and our ordinance says a public meeting shall be held, whether anyone attends or not is irrelevant. And for that reason, I would suggest we continue this discussion and wait until we have legal response as to whether we should or should not even be considering this. So for that reason, I guess I can't make a finding. I can't I can't make a finding for or against.
Our our legal counsel has raised her hand, so I would like to hear her input. Go ahead, Ms. Lane.
I agree. Sorry, I know that you opened it up for discussion, and there were a lot of questions that everyone was answering, but I do. I think I was still waiting for it to circle back to the continuance issue because I think I've already expressed previously that I I do have concerns about this requirement not being met. So I I think at this point, now that I've looked at it a little longer, I think it would be my recommendation to to move for a continuance, which would need to be done with a motion and a second and a vote to continue it to a specific date, which would be the next planning commission meeting, so we can make sure this requirement has been met.
Okay, thank you.
Can I confirm that um we get to pick up exactly where we left off and we don't have to do all of this again?
Yeah, so so pursuant to the ordinance, it says, you know, within forty days, you can so within forty days of the close of the public hearing, you have to make a decision. So yes, you can continue it, and then you can pick up, have more discussion and a vote. Okay, you're also welcome. I mean, you could do, I mean, you're also welcome to do it all again, too, if you want to. Um, there's a choice there, but I think the public hearing has closed on it, and you just need to make a decision within forty days.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Lane, because I definitely don't think anyone wants to go through the whole thing all over again. Um, okay, uh, I do want to, I do want to give Commissioner Togi a chance to weigh in here.
Well, I feel like I can make the findings. Um, I just have a question on what if the meeting doesn't happen again? What if? So where where are we then? I guess that's a future decision.
It sounds like what Ms. Lane said is if it's not at the next public hearing, then we do have to listen to it all over again.
Yes, I I'd say like it is, the ordinance says within forty days, the planning commission shall make a decision. So you you do need to, it would need to be posted on the next meeting, and we would have to pick it up and make a decision at that meeting. That's just the purviews of what the zoning ordinance requires, because, you know, we have certain timeframes. We have to meet for applicants.
Well, I I was talking about the meeting between um the the people in that living in that area. But that's what we're talking about, right? That's what um Vice Chair's question was.
Well, he he wants legal to have time to actually give him a give him a comfortable answer. So I guess if if legal comes back and says they need to to redo the meeting, then it has to start all over from scratch anyway.
Okay, I see. Got it. It's it's like ten o'clock and it's I'm I'm.
Yeah, I think all of us are brain fried at this point.
Yeah.
Um. Okay. I honestly can make the findings, but it sounds like there is some on some discomfort from legal and from Vice Chair Wilson. Um, Commissioner Best, you put your hand back up.
Yeah, if we're gonna do a continuance, I I would ask I I'm concerned about emergency response, and I want to make sure that staff looks into I mean, to have a commercial property that we're approving, and we don't have any idea who would respond or if the road is appropriate. I'd really like staff to give that some thought. Uh, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, Mr. McNeely, would that would would considering that make us have to start from scratch all over again?
Yeah, I I don't see so, I don't I don't think so. Uh, not from my perspective, Madam Chair. We we can take that. If uh the commission wants to continue, um, we can take uh staff, and I'm sure the applicant is listening um can take uh those comments and be ready for when we come back to um uh come back to discussion, um respond to those comments.
Okay.
You know, among other things, we had, we had a a neighbor say that he was going to take the steel plates off the bridge that now make it function. I mean, this you know, that that's I I'm thinking of an ambulance or a fire truck trying to get to this property. So I, you know, common sense says we need to be taking a look.
So um I I, okay. Oh.
Can I can I make a motion to con?
Yeah, I think we need to because I don't think anybody's brain is going to continue functioning for much longer. I know mine isn't. So um a at this point, it sounds like we have a motion for a continuance from Commissioner Hayward.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Lane, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I would just recommend, I think it's clear for the record, to continue it to a specific date. So the motion could say continue to, all right, when is the next planning commission meeting? The twenty-fourth of September?
Yeah, September twenty-fourth, I believe.
That would just be my recommendation.
Okay, so the motion is to continue to the next public hearing on September twenty-fourth. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
CUP twenty-five dash zero two two.
So I'll make a motion to continue um CUP twenty-five zero two two to the next regularly scheduled meeting on September twenty-fourth.
Now I will second that.
Okay, so we have a motion for continuance um to the next public hearing by Commissioner Hayward. And we have a second by Commissioner Best. All those in favor, Commissioner Hayward.
Aye.
Commissioner Burger.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Togi.
Aye.
Aye.
And I suppose I'll go with everybody else. So I'll also vote aye, passes unanimously. The um, the CUP is continued to the next public hearing.
Madam Chair, this is Jess with staff, and so we will um, from hearing the discussion prior to the continuance, there there was uh several several concerns expressed. Uh, but the main purpose of this continuance is to work with Legal on um has the neighborhood meeting um zoning ordinance requirement been met or not? Um, and of course, that would um potentially give the applicant a chance to go back and um meet that requirement.
Okay, all right. Um, I think we have all that figured out. Um, all right. The next item on the agenda is another call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any. It is nine fifty-nine PM, and I am calling the meeting. All right, I'm getting up at six for work in the morning, so I'm going to bed. Good night, you all.
Good night.
Good night, I bet you won't be here for the next meeting.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, have fun with that one, Vice Chair Wilson. I won't be at the next one, so.
Thanks, thanks for that, yeah.
Okay, we're all going out for drinks, right?
I'm going to bed. Have a good night, y'all.
Good night.